Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board meeting for June 20th, 2024. Please start by joining me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we do have a full agenda. We have a full board tonight of seven, and we have a full agenda, so we will be using the three-minute timer again, unfortunately, to busy night. First up is Marist College Running Track. Welcome back, guys.
Good evening. Jeff Bracken, Executive Vice President, Marist College. This is over to John Andrews, working with Andy and his peers to ensure issues are addressed. So, John and Justin, please take a moment.
Thank you, Jeff. We have it up on the screen, so that's good.
Good evening. For the record again, my name is John Andrews. I'm the engineer for Marist College. I'm not going to bore you with the details. You know what we're doing. We're doing a Division One running track and synthetic field on the lower portion of the north end of Marist College campus. We have continued to advance the design. Justin will probably touch on some comfort stations. I think of most significance here is we've continued to work with Andy. He's been gracious enough to consult with us, and I think we've finally reached a point where we've satisfied his requirements, the basic issues, and that the items that are remaining are pretty much belt and suspenders, dot in the i's and crossing the t's. The other issue is, you may recall, Kristen had raised the legal standing of a piece of property at the south end of our facility that's kind of no man's land. We have advanced those discussions. We hope to have a resolution in the near future, but both the town and the city are engaged, and we expect, we actually have a meeting with council on Monday, so we should be able to wrap that up relatively quickly as well. For the most part, what we are hoping to do is at least advance this tonight and get an egg deck. Tomorrow's the deadline for a ZBA application, which is perfected and sitting on my desk, which I would like to file. My client would like me to file it as well. And other than that, we're here to take your comments and see if we can move this ahead.
All right. Thanks, John. Let's go to Kristen.
Yeah, Kristen's online tonight, but she's downstairs, but she's still not feeling well, so she decided not to share her terms. Kristen?
Yep, thanks. So, the application is on for a public hearing. It's also on for a seeker type one action subject to a coordinated review, which John touched upon. So, if the board felt inclined to adopt the draft negative declaration that's in your packets this evening, the applicant would be able to go to the ZBA then and seek their area variances, and then would come back to the planning board ultimately for their conditional approval. So, from a planning department perspective, they have provided their coastal consistency review form, or all set there. There were only minor comments remaining from a site plan perspective. I know that they are, with this submission, proposing, it had been discussed previously, but they are actually demonstrating it on the site plan, but two 453-square-foot comfort station buildings down by the track at this point, one to serve as a bathroom building facility, and the other to serve as, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but more or less a comfort station for if there were injuries or the like there. But otherwise, I'm recommending that the board would open the public hearing this evening, hear any public comment, and then ultimately the board could discuss the application. If you felt so inclined, you could go ahead and adopt a coastal consistency resolution, and also a seeker resolution, and then defer action with comments, and that would allow them to get over to the ZBA.
Sounds good. Thanks, Kristen. Now, the man of the hour, Andy. How's it so?
Sure, sure. So, as we had discussed previously, you know, stormwater has been kind of my primary point of focus on this. I had, with my comments, I had some questions about the separation to bedrock with the system. The stormwater will be managed beneath the turf field. I had concerns about separation of bedrock and how long it would take for the system to drain. John was able to work with his colleagues to kind of get me the information I was looking for based on geotechnical testing that showed the texture of the soil was likely to drain well, and that the separation was maintained, you know, throughout the area. So, that was my primary concern, and that's satisfied. And we're going to follow up with some testing during construction, but based on the information that John was able to provide me, the system will drain within a reasonable period of time, likely less than the 48 hours required. So, I'm okay moving forward with the seeker determination.
Hey, great. Thanks for analyzing that in the last minute.
Sure. We appreciate Andy's effort. Please. We did a lot of scrambling, but he was the man of the hour.
Yesterday was a busy day.
Yeah. We appreciate it.
Sound for public hearings? Time will we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved to seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, let's go around the board for comments. Anything left? Peter?
I think you've addressed all the concerns that have been expressed by the board and by the board staff, and I think you're ready to move forward.
Thanks. Ben?
I want to pull your mic down, Ben. There was only one thing that I saw Kristen had, the size of the parking stalls, dimensions. Has that changed? This is too small?
We will make sure that they're proper size. We're dealing with out-of-state engineers, so parking space sizes vary, but it would be our intent to make sure we meet the minimum Town of Poughkeepsie standards, so we'll adjust that accordingly, sir.
That's it? That's all I had?
Right. Thanks, Ben. Let me go to Steve.
No other comment?
No, no comments.
No other comments?
No, nothing really. Just you guys are still going back to the ZBA for the lighting, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And my comments, I guess, you know, you're losing some parking, but your overall master parking plan says you still have an abundance, and you guys tend to manage that with people around with the things. How did it work out with the lot line thing with the water department?
We haven't, we haven't reached the final decision. We were seeking a license agreement. It looks like the town and the city might be willing to part with the land, but all of which is going to take time, so it's, it's still a matter in flux. Andy might be able to answer it better than I because he was at the last meeting.
Yeah, I, you know, I think the plan is a license agreement initially. What comes after that, I think, is still up in the air.
Okay.
But a license agreement should be able to be established fairly quickly.
Okay, great. And...
Just for clarity, Mr. Chairman, the ZBA variances required, there are two, which is two foot, two tenths of a foot candle at the property line, which we do not meet in several instances. And then because we do not, our light poles are 100 feet high. They would normally be exempt, but because we don't comply with the two-foot, they default to a 20-foot pole height, which doesn't work at all. So, we're seeking the two variances for pole height and foot candles at the property line.
Yeah, the ZBA will have to address that.
And we think we've done a fairly good job of justifying why that...
Having to cut off and all that stuff to focus where it needs to go.
Yes.
Can you say one more thing about how the bathrooms work out and the water for drinking?
If I can share again, I'll show you the two buildings.
So, they're up, you're going to be up against that wall there?
So, there is a building here with four individual toilets. We're considering adding urinals to each of those toilets, so for cleanliness, but they'd be for anyone's use. And then there's a building here with an additional toilet, so it would be five total toilets, which in a normal event of under, you know, fewer than 200 people is sufficient.
Okay.
And then also in that building, there would be this space for, I call it athletics here, but it has a ice machine. It could be a safety zone. And then data, which is, you know, we're going to need that for...
Like water bottle fill or something as well?
Oh, there's water fountains on both, on both buildings right there.
Okay, great, great.
And then we'll put spigots for hoses.
What we will be doing, Mr. Chairman, is bringing water down from our central loop, which is up in John Winslow Boulevard. We'll be bringing it down the hill. And if you were looked in one of the pictures, just the other side of the parking lot from where this facility is, up about 20 feet, there's an existing pump station.
Right there.
We'll be pumping from down there up to there with a small lift station. We have to get Andy's approval for that and Health Department approval, but we're just kind of fine-tuning the details because it all dovetails with how the electric comes down. So, we're, the electrical engineers are just finalizing all those details now, so they will be in the next submission.
All right. Thanks for updating me on that.
Carl, I got a question?
Sure.
Is there any other sport activity that's going to be used in those facilities, the bathrooms?
Well, any activity on this field?
The softball field?
Softball would use it as well.
But you're not doing softball tournaments?
Softball's not part of this project.
We're not touching the softball field. We're maintaining that as is.
Right. I'm just talking about the facilities to be used.
Yep, and it will be open and available for anybody, any user on that plateau.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Sharon.
Okay. I move the planning board to determine that the Marist College Running Track and Field is consistent with the Town of Poughkeepsie's approved local waterfront revitalization program.
Second.
Moved to the seconded for LWRP. Called question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board to defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following, one through eight.
Second.
Moved to the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Good to go. Good luck at the ZBA.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, you send us out into heat, and you get to...
You're going to have air conditioning on the field, huh? Maybe some misters, maybe. All right, IBM Quantum. Up next. Is there someone presenting in the room? Okay. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Miller with Scott Stevens and McCoy. I'm here for the IBM quantum project. You had originally seen this project. We had submitted this drawing, as it indicated, which we prefer to do as phase one, and then we were going to do a full build-out. But given the timing of the equipment that was going to be part of the phase two, we've now backed away from that and now have just the phase one that we're going to be seeking approval for.
Okay.
So, we revised the plan, resubmitted, and there were some minor comments that were raised, I think like four clarification issues, I think that we can address. And then also, too, is that we've added some additional landscaping along, which will be part of this project. So, it'll be part of that. We have two, two permanent generators, two chillers, two temporary generators that will go in while we're waiting for the equipment for the full generators for the permanent ones, and then those will be removed, but the space will remain because, as you are aware, that eventually we're going to use that space for the future generators. But we'll come back to you for the full build-out at that time, but...
Yeah, you said it was more than two years out.
Right. And so, that's pretty much it. I think there was some clarification about one of the light poles on the review comment. We will take care of that and get that clarified. The striping that we show here was meant to be no parking, so to continue the circulation around the island that's here, and then also provide no parking up against the equipment inside the fence. And it will be a chain link fence, a permanent chain link fence with slats for now, and jersey barriers inside the fence, so you won't see them.
All right.
That's, if you have any other questions about the project, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
All right. Thanks. We got most of the details last time we were here. Kristen, what's...
Yeah, so it's on for a public hearing for seeker purposes. It's an unlisted action subject to an uncoordinated review. It's also on for coastal consistency review. My comments that remain for site plan, excuse me, purposes are fairly minor at this point. Like Scott had alluded to, thank you, just a couple of clarifications and cleaning up the plans a little bit. Otherwise, staff is recommending that the board open a public hearing, adjourn, excuse me, open a public hearing, close the public hearing, depending on the comments that are heard, and we'll discuss the application. But there's also a resolution for adopting coastal consistency and also for a negative declaration that's in your packets regarding seeker. And again, if the board chooses, based on hearing any public comment or otherwise, if you feel okay to move forward, you could adopt a resolution to grant conditional site plan approval. The remaining comments are really just mine and the engineering departments at this point, so, you know, it's fairly minor. We've already, you know, circulated all to the correct people, and there were no additional fire department comments. They were set at the detail of the crossing, the pipe bridge crossing. I think that cleared up a lot. I think it's like 16 or 18 feet high, so that was more than sufficient for the fire vehicle apparatus. And then planning board will also conduct architectural review, which really is just about weighing in on what this looks like at a standing level, right, from like IBM Road or otherwise, because I know there was some discussion about landscaping, but they did provide some of that in their plan. If you're satisfied with it, then I think we're all set.
All right. Thanks, Kristen. Any comments, Andy, on this?
You know, really, our only comment is that if and when you do come back for the next phase, if you go over five, an acre, you know, we're going to have to look at that as project as...
We've already started programming for that, so forward. Thank you.
Great. All right. I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved to seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Anyone in the room wish to comment on IBM?
And Scott, if you wouldn't mind unsharing?
Share your screen, so I'm sorry. Just in case anybody's trying to speak up.
Thank you. So, we're looking for comments on the IBM Building Three Quantum System. Anyone on Zoom have any comments on that application?
No one's in the audience, so I think we're good. Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved to the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Go around for comments. Start with Nicole.
I didn't, I didn't really have too many comments. My only question was, construction will be done within the next two, two years? Is that...
For this phase, yes.
Okay. Yeah, that was really my only question.
All right. Rocco, what do you think?
No, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Sharon?
No questions.
And Steve?
No questions.
Ben?
Nothing.
Peter?
The last meeting, there was a question about the area of disturbance. Has the, the application been changed to the point where that's no longer an issue? There's no question about segmentation here?
Well, from, from a stormwater perspective, the area disturbance has been significantly reduced from the previous version that we've seen. And the comment that I have is that if and when they come back for the next phase of this project, we'll have to look at the project, both projects together, when it comes to soil disturbance in terms of, for stormwater pollution prevention.
The other question I raised at our last meeting is, does the state building code set forth a set of regulations that addresses an above-ground oil tank containment?
Yes. There are, there are containment requirements for these...
Okay. So, and they're, so they meet, they satisfy, they're going to satisfy that?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I heard about that last time with the generators and stuff. Good. And I appreciate the landscape screening because I know there's the daycare and the other medical building across the street from there, so...
Yeah, I think it'll help.
So, that's actually good.
Okay. I move the planning board to determine that the IBM Building 003 Quantum System Two is consistent with the Town of Poughkeepsie's approved local waterfront revitalization program.
Second.
Moved to the seconded for LWRP. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board to hereby determine that the IBM Building 003 Quantum System Two would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated June 20, 2024.
Second.
Moved to the seconded for seeker. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board to grant conditional site plan approval for IBM Building 003 Quantum System Two, subject to the following. Response to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department. As a advocacy completeness inclusive of and not limited to the following, one through three.
Second.
Moved to the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And then architectural review is, anybody have any comments on architecture? Do you see anything further?
No.
I think we've seen that the landscaping's going to kind of soften the view of it as well. So, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved to the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Ready to go.
Thank you very much. Everybody try to stay cool.
Thank you. You too.
You might want to use those chillers.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Next up is Spark Car Wash. It's off, it's been removed from the agenda by the applicant, but since it was advertised as a public hearing, I move we open the public hearing for Spark?
Second.
Moved to the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board to hereby determine that the IBM Building 003 Quantum System Two would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated June 20, 2024.
Second.
Moved to the seconded for seeker. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board to grant conditional site plan approval for IBM Building 003 Quantum System Two, subject to the following. Response to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department. As a advocacy completeness inclusive of and not limited to the following, one through three.
Second.
Moved to the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And then architectural review is, anybody have any comments on architecture? Do you see anything further?
No.
I think we've seen that the landscaping's going to kind of soften the view of it as well. So, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved to the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Ready to go.
Thank you very much. Everybody try to stay cool.
Thank you. You too.
You might want to use those chillers.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Next up is Spark Car Wash. It's off, it's been removed from the agenda by the applicant, but since it was advertised as a public hearing, I move we open the public hearing for Spark?
Second.
Moved to the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Is there anyone in the room or on Zoom which to comment on the Spark Car Wash tonight?
I don't see anyone in the room. I do see a raised hand on Zoom.
Again, it will be on a future meeting as well, so...
Yeah. So, Steve, you have some comments on the Spark Car Wash? Now would be the time. You can unmute yourself.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. How you doing?
Good.
Okay. It's my understanding that this current cars, wanting to change the type of service, will now get up to 10 times the cars going in there. That seems like a traffic, water usage, and environmental nightmare. Thank you. That's all I got to say.
All right. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else? Again, we're just adjourning, so we will...
And we're going to adjourn to August, I believe, right? Was the request? Yeah, August. Yeah.
Yeah, just looking for the August date.
August 15th, I'm sorry.
All right. I move we adjourn the public hearing to August 15th, 2024.
Second.
Moved to the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right. Move on to Salt Point Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Kane, representing Salt Point Center, joined by a few members of the team as well remotely. Mr. Wogshol, who's the applicant, Ken Casmenta with LRC, and Mike Lamandola from Colliers Engineering, Traffic Consultant, are all, are all on board. If I could share my screen.
A little out of practice, Jeff.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm missing the, there's a big blue share button that I couldn't see.
Thanks for the elevations. That helps on the street view.
Sure. Yes, I think really what the, what we wanted to just say is that since the last time we were here, what we submitted were, attempted to do was submit the responses to the comments related to, related to seeker, in hopes that the board could be in a position to make a secret declaration tonight. So, we've, we've made a kind of a targeted submission of those issues. Happy to talk about it if the board wants to, but otherwise, I think you've had it in front of you. I know everybody's complimenting Andy. We're working under a rush there. We got him some stuff late, so thank you, Andy, for taking a look at that late. But I, again, I, we've attempted to, to address the comments received, and I'm happy to answer any other questions that, that either us or our team can answer tonight that the board or the consultants may have. So, I'll stop there.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Eric?
Sure. Yeah, as Jeff said, it's a submittal to supplement the previous submittal with only the changes, change, change plans and EAF documentation. That said, the staff recommendation tonight is for, with regard to seeker, the board is invited to discuss some of the seeker issues, and then whether it does or does not adopt a seeker negative declaration, it is recommended to defer the application because the applicant still needs to go to the zoning board, and then to return with more revised plans for site plan, especially use permit review. So, the board should, at the end of the day, should defer action on the application, and similarly, on the public hearing, that's recommended, adjourn the public hearing as well. That said, the discussions for tonight, there are, we have our comments. Among them are, the engineer's going to talk about some of the SWIP, the sewer issues that were there before. They, it appears that they may be resolved. For architecture, the, is, is a mass, for massing, it's, the building was moved back. The board now has the venterings from Salt Point Turnpike to consider. The traffic analysis is being reviewed by the traffic consultant. There's a number of comments there. We did, the board did get a number of items in the last 24 to 36 hours, which have been reviewed and commented upon. You do have a draft negative declaration in your packet for that purpose. You do have a draft negative declaration in your packet for that purpose, uh, if you choose to go that way. Parking is also a site plan issue for the board's consideration, you might talk about that, so the applicant knows how to proceed next time, particularly with regard to the vertical stackers, um, and the overall sufficiency of parking on the site, given that, you know, next time they'll need, they'll need, do they need to do more or not? Those are our comments.
Thank you, Eric. We'll see how stormwater's going, et cetera.
Sure. Uh, yeah, so the majority of our comments have been addressed, you know, the outstanding comments have been related to sewer and, uh, stormwater.
Stormwater?
Uh, got, got it.
So I was, um, able to work with LRC, Ken and Brittany there, uh, especially related to stormwater, uh, they really gave me some additional information that, uh, looked at how the underground infiltration, infiltration chambers will function, um, if floodwaters block the outlet discharge, um, from those chambers. They did some modeling that showed that the systems actually have capacity to hold, um, the, the rain events during those storms, um, without flooding or significant flooding of the parking areas, um, which addresses my concerns. So that, that takes care of that one. And then as far as the sewer is concerned, we're still waiting on a video inspection of the downstream sewer, um, but I'm, we're confident that the sewer itself, that the system has capacity, um, if they identify issues with this, the downstream mains, we just ask that the applicant work with us to, to make any necessary repairs to the system.
Right. I see Jeff nodding in agreement.
Right, we've, we've, we've agreed that, yeah, should there, should there be an issue there, we understand that we gotta fix it, and I, I think the discussion wasn't, that's, wasn't necessarily a seeker issue, was that if it's not a problem, it's not a problem, if it's a problem, we gotta fix it, that's right. That's.
I don't know if Carol is on?
No, she's not on.
To make it, but she didn't.
She, she's, doesn't have any remaining comments.
She, she basically referred back to her previous comments and indicated that issues are met.
Right, it was the small letter this time.
And that the application is, is adequate for a aquatic resource permit.
And, uh, JMC as well?
JMC's not present, um, they had some comments on the plan, um, on the updated traffic study, uh, they indicated, uh, among other things that we captured in the NAGDAG, that, uh, the roundabout would be an improvement over, over a signalized operation, uh, that there are some delays associated with it, as there would be with a signal.
Yeah, and there's some signage issues, whatever, some other stuff as well, okay? Since this point, I move we open the public hearing then.
Second.
Move to the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero. Anyone, may I unshare your screen at this point? Anyone wish to comment? Bob, down.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, my name is Christian Gates, and I'm an attorney with Keenan Bean, I'm on, I'm here on behalf of the Mobile One Station, Kenneth Peterson, Real Estate Holdings, as well as its managing member. I first off wanna say that my client is not opposed to the project in general, um, but we do have some concerns regarding the concrete, uh, median that runs along Salt Point Turnpike, and, uh, we do appreciate that on the plans that we reviewed, there's no changes for traffic to turn into my client's gas station, so that is appreciated, but, um, we would request that the planning board, as well as the applicant, look at that concrete median, the way that it is, um, positioned in the road. We spoke with a traffic consultant earlier this morning, and, um, John Canning with Kimley Horn, and it does appear that that concrete median, it extends right to the edge of that driveway on Salt Point Turnpike, and that we have concerns about fuel deliveries, as well as the ability for new vehicles to kinda conveniently make that turn, um, gas stations are a convenience business, and so if that median extends too far, uh, drivers might not be aware that they're able to make a left-hand turn or into the gas station, as well as make an exit left onto Salt Point Turnpike. And so that's really our primary concern at this stage, again, we're not opposed to the application, um, but we would just appreciate if the planning board and the applicant would be able to look at that median. We, in our discussions with, uh, Kimley Horn, he recommended approximately fifteen feet or moving that median back a few feet behind where the mobile, uh, gas sign is that lists the prices, that appeared to be a sufficient distance to move it back in order to prevent, uh, you know, gas tankers, when they bring fuel in, from having to run over that curb and causing any sort of backup or issues like that. And so I'd be happy to answer any other questions as well, my client is here, and, um, yeah, that's pretty much our main and only concern at this point, thank you.
Okay, yeah, make sure you have access, I mean, a lot of these things are mountable, we'll have to make sure that is part of the case as well.
Yeah, um, it, one, one thing I would like to say.
Especially for truck turning, the mount.
Yeah, exactly, i- i- if the truck is making a delivery and then they hit that, and then they have to back up and try to negotiate around it, it's.
You don't want that.
Yeah, exactly, it's just gonna cause more of a backup and kind of, uh, I think frustrate the intents and purposes of that roundabout, which is to relieve traffic congestion. And so I would ask that the planning board and the applicant make, put on the record that it would be moved back, or alternatively, I believe you did mention be holding the planning, uh, the public hearing open to next month, if, if you'd be able to do that and you would like some additional information, we would be able to bring in our traffic consultant to either make a written submission, kinda outlining this in more of a scientific and detailed manner, um, as well as make a presentation if that is, uh, the planning board believes that's necessary.
All right, I mean, letters are always welcome, we get all the paperwork too, from, from the department, so.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to comment on, uh, this application tonight? And it will be adjourned for other time to weigh in. Uh, let's see, when are you coming back, Jeff? Trying to get back for July or? Not July, probably not July.
August.
All right. I, I guess the, uh, right, the, um, if there are seeker issues still outstanding, then, uh, I would hope we can be back on a July meeting. If there are, uh, if, if there aren't, then we, we, yeah, not before August, you know, writing.
I think with Andy's comment here, we're, we're probably okay with seeker.
And even in terms of the traffic, we did have our traffic consultant look at the letter, um, and, you know, um, so, you know, we don't, we don't think for seeker purposes there's anything that, you know, that, that there, there's some, looking at the site plan details that will have to happen, and, and the public hearing will remain open and so on, so there, you know, we will have that opportunity, um.
In that case, I move we adjourn the public hearing to August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Move to the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero. All right, go around the board for comments. Start with Ben.
Oh, from what I heard, Ken satisfied Carol and Mark, goes at a key people here, and everything seems to be in order, I know.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a long way from, uh, where it started. Peter?
I'm a little concerned about the, again, about the parking, I think it's, it's a little fuzzy, I would, I would prefer that we get some clarity, uh, before we move forward. There was, there was a lot of correspondence going back and forth today among the engineers about drainage. I'm not so sure after the last, reading the last one, that there was a, a, a conclusion, positively, that you, you were happy?
Ye- yes, I'm satisfied, yes.
Okay. The downstream mains, I mean, has there been some indication that there is a problem with the downstream mains?
No.
So then why, why are we?
We just asked that they, they haven't been inspected in, in some time, so we've asked them to, to, to take a look, just to make sure that there's no issue.
Okay.
There's some roots growing through or something, blocking, or someone's blockage.
And what, to what extent, if any, does the, the question that's been raised about the concrete median, how relevant is that to the, to the negative declaration, is it? Is that something, I mean, I'm, I don't wanna expose us, you know, to an R seventy-eight down the road, because we didn't, I mean, I read the correspondence today between our, our consultant and the, 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 the gas station owners, I just wanna make sure that before we, we do something, that, that we can rest on, you know, due diligence.
Yeah, what our traffic consultant confirmed to us, just, you know, to summarize it in the briefest way, is that, you know, there are no legal movements that are currently being made in and out of the gas station that would be affected by the, the design the way it is now.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that we still can't, you know, move some things around and work with them to, you know, to come up with a, you know.
It'll still, I just wanted to assure them that we'd be still open for discussion, and have another public hearing, if you can provide us with whatever input you can, that would be helpful, and that our consultant has an opportunity to, we also review that, so that they can share with us, so that moving forward, we can say that, you know, we gave it a good look, and everyone was treated fairly.
Yeah, I was thinking of that, as a site plan issue at this point, to.
I think it's a site plan issue, it's just, uh, the distance, wherever.
And, 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 you know, we're, speaking from the applicant, right, we're, I guess two perspectives, one, this is the DOT's world, and we're just living in it, um, so to the extent that, that they're okay with changing the median, we're certainly not opposed to it, but this was, this was designed with the intent to meet their requirements, so we're, we're happy to, to adjust as, as, as DOT may, may approve.
Many years ago, a very wise man told me, it's better to talk ten times before than have to talk one time after.
That's true.
All right, thanks, Peter. Nicole?
Yeah, I mean, I don't really think I have too much here, um, you guys are working on the parking and the stacking and figuring that out, uh, which is good. I know that Dutchess County Department of Planning had some issues with, uh, we thought it was a little unclear where signage would be for the, for commercial, um, and a little unclear, like, uh, where commercial entrances and exits would be as opposed to residential, so I thought that's something you guys could kind of clear up a little bit.
Absolutely.
And. Yeah, and then, um, other than that, you know, Dutchess County Department of Public Works had a comment about, you know, if, if there was that connection for the rail trail, um, it should be ADA compliant, so I don't know how you guys feel about that, if you wanna continue with that connection or not, and, and that's something that we can further talk about, but I just thought that maybe I should bring it up tonight.
Yeah, it's, it's an unfortunate comment, because not every, not every sidewalk in the, in the, in the, in the town, in the city, in the state.
Right.
Is ADA compliant, and, um, and I, I appreciate that, that, um, ADA compliance is, uh, is, is, is the goal, um, uh, that path doesn't, doesn't work that way, doesn't mean we won't build a path anyway, and, and then the last ten feet is just, is just, happens to be a, um, a, a, a dirt connection there over, over their lands, but, but we, we won't be able to build anything on it if that's the, uh, if that's the position, so we're, we're, we are dismayed by that, but, um.
I, I think we need to talk more with that, because this is a, a really good amenity.
And if I may as well, uh, I've had conversations with Matthew, and, uh, this is not where we were before, so I wanna revisit that conversation with him myself, as well.
This is a great amenity for the project, as well as other residents in the area to gain access to the trail.
We would appreciate if you reached out, the same comment would also help in this discussion.
Yeah, I could, I could, I could do that.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Anything else?
No.
All right, yeah, I wanna add to what Nicole said, I'm also, uh, would, I would like some more clarification on, uh, the parking, especially how this, how the stackable parking would work, I know physically how it works, but I mean, how, how the, how the, uh, implementation would take place, and then also, uh, you know, I'm a real fan of the rail trail, so, uh, I, I think you guys, uh, need to, uh, figure out how to come to an accommodation with the county to get the hookup there, because that, that is a valuable resource to the county, and also a good, uh, amenity for this site. Thank you, that's what I have.
Sharon?
No, nothing new.
No other comment?
All right, let me see what, if I had any last one, I think we covered most of it. Let's see, I mean, what was the connect, what was the path gonna be made of at this point? Woodchip or something, or?
Yeah, we, we left it somewhat undetermined, exactly.
Or stone dust, stone dust maybe.
So that we could work with them on that.
Something like stone dust may be more firm, but the topography is an issue potentially for the ADA, we'll have to see. Yeah, that's the biggest sticking point there, and the stackers, for the vertical stacking of cars, if that, if that turns out to be needed, what's the trigger that you can actually implement that? Land bank parking, uh, we gotta figure that out, and, uh, is there a valet, or, or how to?
Yeah, information on how that operation would work, right, would probably be helpful.
So like Carvana, where you put a coin in a slot, and get your, get your car back down, on top, or however it works.
It sounds like the board is, in general, at least amenable to the topic of the stacked parking, so then the applicant, um, I, I'm just thinking because they're, if they're receiving their NAGDAG, then they are able to go to the ZBA, and there is a determination from the zoning administrator that that parking is not allowed, so, uh, it may make sense to have that as part of the ZBA application, if the board indicates that they are generally amenable to that being used for the land bank parking.
Okay, thanks, Lisa, I, I mean, I was amenable because it's kind of off in the corners of the side, it's not directly on either the roads.
Just one question, has it been decided whether that's gonna be a service, or is it gonna be left to individuals? Cause I am concerned if it's left to individuals.
That was my question about operation.
So until we know that, I still am, am open on that whole pocket.
Yeah.
So if I could just ask, uh, I, cause I, I hadn't heard that concern before, so the, the, just to be able to address it more clearly, um, not, not tonight, but in the future, just to understand it better, there's concern about the ability, uh, ability, but, but the, the, maybe the ability of, uh, of a, of a, of a resident or visitor to properly use the machinery, is that, is that the concern?
That's my concern.
Okay, all right.
Yes, I've never, we've never seen them in operation, I don't think, anyway.
I've only seen them in New York City, and, and I know there, it's always part of a service.
Okay, all right. And maybe, maybe it has to be that way here.
It would be helpful if, uh, if you know of any that are currently in use, and how they're, you know, if it's a successful approach, so that we could have an example, you know, whether or not it's, uh, doable.
Yeah, that might help you with going to the ZBA as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think the ZBA, though, their question is gonna be much more limited, it's whether or not that counts as, you know, if, if it's, counts as parking, or if it's something, you know, undefined, so, so that'll be a different conversation, but I think for us, we do need to understand.
And again, this is land bank, so there's a chance it'll never be needed, but, uh, but we have to make sure it's allowed for, yeah.
Right, if I may, I'll take a black shell here, um, to comment on that parking, I actually do have, um, in Westchester, a property that I installed a stacker, which is hardly used, but, uh, there is, you know, seldom when it's used, there is a sign over there, the super, um, like, with the phone number of the super, and he comes out to, basically, you know, take care of that, that's, it's, it's automatic, but, you know, you, we don't want, uh, over there, that everybody play around with it, so we have our super take care of the stackable, if, whenever it's used.
Okay, that, that's, that's, we're hoping there's something like that, versus everybody just trying to prove themselves.
So kind of a hybrid between, uh, between a valet and the individual, but there is, there is somebody responsible for, for operation, it sounds like so.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Uh, if you do have someone there for operations, they have to be available. I, I mean, because if your car is on top, and, uh, you want it.
Yes.
You know, you can't, you can't say that the guy's on vacation till Monday, if it's Friday.
Yeah, with a project this size, we will have a super twenty-four seven.
All right.
So there's also, there's also some limitations on the size of the vehicles that can be used for this, right?
Right, compact only type of thing, yeah.
Yeah, your truck wouldn't. We know.
Your truck would collapse. What, what do you call your truck? Is that a?
Talking about the Cybertruck?
Needs a CDL driver.
Yeah.
It's a WB90 is.
Something like that.
All right, we've got, uh, to move on, let's see if everybody gets a chance to weigh in here. So I guess we're covered for now. Oh, not, oh, another, one idea, I just saw another note here. And another idea, approach, what you want to do is, is, uh, leave some of metro roofing parking across the street for, for overflow of, uh.
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Metro roofing might have overflow parking across the street, they got a big pad if you want to make an agreement with them versus the stackers or, it's just a thought.
Right, we can, we can, we can, yeah, right, see if that would work.
All right.
I move the planning board adopt the secret negative declaration resolution for this project dated June 20th, 2024.
Stack it.
Moves in second for Seeker, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero.
Move the planning board defer action on this application and direct the applicant to respond in writing to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included, but not limited to the following ones through four terms.
Second.
Moves in second to defer, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just clarify, they have the recommendation, there are a couple of blanks on some of the comments, uh, the engineer comments are dated June 13th and June 19th. The traffic consultant's comments are dated June 10th and the wetland consultant's comments are dated June 13th, not June 12th.
All right, thanks for correcting that, Eric. And, uh, good luck with the ZBA.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next up is WashCo Car Wash on South Road. Someone here present that tonight?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, James Karas with AMC on behalf of Splash Car Wash Incorporated.
All right.
Uh, with your permission, I'll share my screen briefly.
Go ahead.
Can everyone see that? There you go. All right, good evening, James Karas on behalf of WashCo Car Wash and Splash Car Wash Incorporated. Um, we're here for an application regarding, uh, 2245 South Road, uh, for a proposed car wash redevelopment. Uh, this application has been before your board several times, uh, most recently in February of this year. Uh, subsequent to that, we reappeared at the zoning board of appeals for an update uh, on the project with, uh, the ZBA. Uh, and during that time, we were also coordinating closely with the New York State DOT to work through, uh, questions and comments that, uh, the state agency had, uh, regarding this application. Um, we've, uh, continued to receive comments from staff and, uh, your traffic consultant, uh, which we've, uh, worked through, uh, to continue to refine this site plan, uh, to, uh, to perfect this application. And, uh, we've made a, a full resubmission, uh, the previous month, uh, in advance of this meeting and we're, uh, in receipt of, uh, minor additional comments, uh, which we believe are, uh, uh, technical in nature and, uh, um, you know, can be easily addressed, uh, at the appropriate time. And, uh, we look forward to, um, the next step in this process, hopefully, uh, getting back to the ZBA. Uh, hopefully this board is, uh, uh, willing to consider, uh, reviewing the draft negative declaration for this application as well. And with that, I'll, uh, you know, open up to the board and try to answer any questions if there are any.
All right, thank you. Kristen?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Um, thank you, James, for the overview. Sorry about this. Um, so the application is on for a public hearing this evening, um, and for secret purposes, it's on for an unlisted action subject to a coordinated review. The planning board did declare its intent to be lead agency back in February 2023. The planning board has seen this application several times at this point, about six or seven, um, although they were adjourned at a number of meetings. Um, the public hearing has been open for many months now. Um, I have also documented, uh, for the special use permit, um, there is a special use permit requirement, um, for the car wash use in the BH zoning district, so, um, a number of the items that are listed in the staff report, uh, just call out those, those requirements, um, for this special use permit review. Um, a couple of them do require variances, um, to be reviewed, um, and granted or not granted by the town's zoning board of appeals. Um, but the applicant has, uh, gone ahead and, um, revised their site plan based on a number of comments, based on staff reports, our traffic consultant, um, department of transportation, um, that's the state department, uh, we had them pull together a traffic study which was reviewed by, uh, the town's traffic engineer, AKRF. We have Alex on, Ald on for that, um, contribution this evening. And, um, ultimately from a planning department perspective, uh, there are some fairly minor comments that remain. Um, I did want to clarify a couple of things, one being that we did confirm with Arlington Fire Department that they were satisfied with the circulation around the building as shown. Um, it, it does demonstrate a conservative turning radius around the building, it is tight, uh, but, you know, that, that is ultimately a site plan related item. I don't know if there's something we could cut back that curve a little bit more, but, um, that, that ultimately could be a condition of approval that we could probably sort out, um, if needed. Uh, things to keep in mind as well, uh, the, the code requirements only require about eight stacking, queuing parking spaces or queuing spaces, excuse me. Um, they are providing over 20, um, in this instance. Um, and the building itself was reduced from about 5,400 square feet to, uh, 4,700 square feet to accommodate some of the other comments, um, and address some of the other comments that had been brought to the applicant's attention over the past year or so. Um, there were comments related to, uh, turning in and, in and out of the property. Um, we had run this by both emergency services, which are satisfied with, with the, uh, approach now. Um, we also ran it by department of transportation repeatedly. Uh, they have no additional comments at this time based on the analysis and the site plan before you today. Uh, given the limited number of, uh, larger vehicles, emergency sized vehicles, they, they just did not have any additional comments, they were satisfied. Um, I do have all of this in writing, I have comments provided by DOT, um, in February and April, uh, because we did want to make sure we were doing due diligence on behalf of the board related to the traffic analysis. Um, we also had them confirm their, their, to their satisfactions, no storage, um, sight lines, uh, all of that will have to be sorted out and finalized as part of a highway work permit, which is pretty standard, uh, for operating or changing anything within the DOT right of way at this point. We also had them confirm whether or not they were going to require additional, uh, signal timing changes or the like. Um, based on what the applicant is proposing today, there are no additional, uh, requirements being recommended or, uh, you know, dictated by DOT, um, in their right of way. And, um, the only other item I'd like to point out, and I know that Alex can go into much more detailed depth about this, is for the traffic study. Um, the planning board had requested that, you know, the, uh, forthcoming or, or known built, builds that could be coming down, um, in the next couple of years on Route 9 be factored into this project analysis. Uh, that is a conservative approach, the applicant did do that analysis based on the planning board's request, though it is not required by DOT's requirements. Um, and so there are still a couple of comments that Alex has asked the applicant to address, address, uh, that said, um, based on the comments that were provided and what would be determined for, or the findings that would be provided based on those comments being addressed, it's not going to elevate this to a moderate or a large scale environmental impact by secret standbook standards. Um, so all of that to say that there is a draft negative declaration in the planning board's packet for consideration this evening. If you have specific comments or questions about the traffic analysis, I obviously will defer to Alex. Um, and of course, uh, Andy Lern, the CPL reviewed the application as well, so.
Yep.
Um, again, on for, uh, public hearing, we, we would recommend that you open the public hearing, hear any comments, um, adjourn the public hearing in either case, whether or not you were ready to move forward with Seeker, because the applicant still needs to go to the ZBA for those critical determinations, including, uh, the size of the lot being, um, about one acre when two is required for this use. And again, that is not a planning board determination, that is a ZBA determination.
Yep. All right, thanks, Kristen. Uh, Andy?
Yeah, I don't really have any seeker related comments. Um, you know, the, there are a couple of turning movements that I think, um, well, one in particular, the, the interior, um, vehicle wash lane entrance, uh, with the pedestrian vehicle movement, um, seems to be a, a difficult movement to make. Um, so, you know, later, um, you know, on, I, we may want to consider, um, some sort of signage or restrictions for that size vehicle that, in that interior lane. Um, and the other one is really just a, a request, um, the other, another, the other car wash application, um, that we have before us, uh, has indicated that they collect their roof water and, and return it to the wash water system, which I think is a really great idea. Um, and I'd like to ask that they look at that and see if they can do that here too.
Okay, yeah, they have a pitched roof, I think, for the bulk of it and then some gutters. Could lead it down. All right, thanks, Andy. And Alex, you're on for, uh.
Great, good evening, everyone.
How are you doing?
Good, how about yourself? So just to follow up, uh, with Andy, uh, on Andy's comments, uh, we took another look at the site plan and again, um, most of our comments have been addressed. Uh, we did find a few stray, uh, a few stray, uh, they may have been typos in the site plan, which we feel can be easily addressed. I think we were, there were a few stop signs that were present in previous iterations of the site plan that just may have not made into the final version. Uh, but again, we feel that's a, a very easy, very simple items to address. So in terms of the site plan, uh, we have no further comments and again, we, we feel that all of our previous comments were adequately, adequately addressed. Uh, in terms of the traffic study from a seeker standpoint, again, we feel that our, our previous comments have been adequately addressed. Uh, the traffic study also addressed the planning board's concerns regarding, uh, the Casper Kill development and provided a supplemental sensitivity analysis, which we, we were comfortable with. Uh, we just actually had requested some just additional backup, uh, for that supplemental analysis, but again, from a seeker standpoint, we have no additional concerns at this point. And all of the, uh, the other noble projects, uh, for foam and wash, for the foam and wash development was also incorporated as we had requested. And again, uh, there was just some additional backup we had requested, but again, we don't foresee any fundamental changes to the conclusions of the study or foresee any notable impacts. So with that, we'd just like to say that from AKR's standpoint, the traffic study and the site plan from a traffic standpoint, we feel our, all of our previous comments have been addressed.
All right, thank you for your presentation, Alex. This is on for public hearing, so I move we open to public hearing?
Second.
Moves consecutive, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Anyone in the audience or on Zoom, can you unshare your screen now? Chris, or James, sorry. Thank you. And we can see if anybody wishes to comment.
We do have a raised hand. It is Dee, if you want to unmute.
Hello, thank you. I've spoken at the ZBA on this project, this is too close to the houses and that variation should not be allowed. And have you studied the running water down the hill to Route 9 would do in the winter when it freezes? Thank you, you guys have a good evening, man.
Great, thanks, Dee. Uh, to your comment about the distance from the houses, you should, um, you know, that's when the ZBA looks at the variances, you will have an opportunity to make that comment to the ZBA, uh, at their public hearing, so please, you know, avail yourself of that opportunity when it, when it comes up.
Thank you, I definitely will, thank you.
As far as water going down South Gate, we should not have any of that because we're closing off that entrance to South Gate Drive.
I think he was talking about Route 9.
That exit, yeah, Route 9 can still have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I said Route 9, not South Gate.
Okay, I missed that, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thanks for your comment.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Let's see, James, are you trying to try to make the ZBA meeting coming up and try to get back for July or you want?
Uh, we would, uh, be pleased to, uh, appear at the ZBA in July if, uh, if the schedule allows.
Yeah, the, um, planning board submission deadline would be Monday for the July meeting, so I don't know if you'd be making another planning board submission on Monday, James? You might be back in August.
And the ZBA submission deadline is tomorrow at noon.
I felt they were already scheduled to go back to the ZBA July 8th.
Oh, that's right, you are, I'm sorry, you're already on. I thought this is what the new application, thank you.
Yeah, so it's for July 8th and then.
So James, are you looking to submit?
Do you think you would be able to turn around a submission for Monday or would you need to wait and come back in August to the planning board?
Uh, I believe, to address the remaining comments from, uh, staff and AKRF on this, I would believe, uh, we would need to defer this to the August hearing.
Okay.
But we are, we do have tentatively July 8th on the schedule for, uh, the ZBA.
All right. I just want to clarify so I could move that we adjourn the public hearing to August 15th, 2024.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. And we will go around the board for comments. Start with Peter.
I, um, you know, looking at, at the traffic studies, you know, and considering that the, uh, our consultant has reviewed their future build analysis, but when you consider Casper Kill and the curb property, you're looking at between, depending on the, on the density that's permitted, depending on the application, you could be looking at between 800 and a thousand, uh, units of housing directly across the street from this project. So I, I have to say that in spite of all the work that's been done, you know, I'm skeptical. So, you know, I think there was a good reason for the, for the board, for the town board to pass, you know, an ordinance that says this property should be sited on the, on a site less, not less than two acres, particularly a project like this, which, which is, is of such high density and volume. So that's my only comment.
Yeah, I mean, the, the car wash that was there previously was a, a.
Antiquated.
Just one, one, one at a time kind of car wash, so this is a much longer throughput. But we have to look at our traffic studies as well. Ben, anything?
My feelings on this, I'm not going to dispute the technical analysis that was done by all the engineers and experts with traffic and everything. And I, I, you know, I can't dispute that and say it's not a good thing to do, but for, it's not, my feelings are it's not the best thing for the community, especially for this neighborhood, for the residents in that neighborhood. Uh, so like Peter, I'm very skeptical also. So that's just looking at for, for the people who live in that area.
All right, thanks, Ben. Go to Steve.
Uh, no additional comment?
Sharon?
No additional.
Uh, I, I think I, I have to side with Peter and with Ben. I, I mean, I'm not going to dispute all the technical stuff, but I'm kind of skeptical about why we need another, uh, car wash there. Again, I'm not here to dispute the business thing because that's up to the owner to, to figure out if he can make a viable business out of it, but there's a, I'm still skeptical of, of the issue of this property.
All right, Nicole?
Uh, yep, uh, I don't really have, uh, too many comments. Um, you'll just have to, uh, uh, get a variance for that sign, um, if this particular project is approved. Uh, that looks a little too big, so, um, other than that, I don't really have any comments.
Great, thanks. Uh, I guess my comment, you know, we, we asked you to go to visit the ZBA because it was. because it was subs, you know, only an acre and some other setback issues. So, and while they couldn't rule on it, you know, can, James, can you elaborate on their, on their thoughts of what the ZBA said to you? And I know you seem to have a lot of signage on here. They tend to not like so much signage.
Sure. We appeared before the ZBA in July of last year and then in March, or excuse me, in the beginning of April this year. Both times, our, our team felt that the response from the ZBA was rather neutral, if not somewhat positive, based on the requested variances. But I couldn't, couldn't accurately tell you their position on this, this evening.
Okay. Did they say anything about the signage at this time?
They have not looked at the signage yet, and those variances would be submitted later. I believe that the applicant would be submitting, I believe the variances that they'll be looking at next month are just the ones related to the actual site and those characteristics, right? Later on, the signage would certainly have to get variances.
Yep.
I'm sure that those would need some changes.
All right. I mean, my, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I have a concern of the architecture about such a tall, tall wall fronting on Route nine there. Just sticking away about the roof line. And that goes into, that goes along with the, you know, too many signs, it feels like, as well as a big pole sign. And I had a question on the pole sign. Is it, it looks like a display screen there. That's something that can change and move.
That's correct. There's a, a small electronic message display component of that.
Because I think our town code does not allow it to be a moving display of any kind. Just if it's static, for the most part, then that's acceptable, I believe.
The signage will be, I mean, again, you know, will have to be reviewed first by the zoning department for, to see what, you know, in what ways it meets or does not meet the code, and then they'll have to get variances. And the ZBA does tend to be very skeptical of signed variances.
I do have one question. I thought the wash code expressed the thirty-two foot side was the front. It's not the forty-foot sides the front facing Route nine?
I think so.
Could you clarify that for us?
Oh, maybe it is. Which side is facing?
No, I, I believe you had it correctly. The, the
The lower.
Front of the building, yeah, the front of the building, fronting Route nine would be the forty-foot side. Yes.
Okay.
Where, where forty-five is permitted in this zone, I would add.
Yeah, it's, it's
This layout's a little deceiving, though. It tends to suggest that the, the lower side's to the front. So please clarify that, because again, I would be concerned, as Carl would, would the forty-foot side be in front?
All right, just, you know, basically, it's a billboard. So versus a part of the architecture is what I'm, what I'm seeing. So we'll have to see what other board members feel that that can come down a bit. All right, that's my final thoughts for today.
All right. I move the planning board determine that the wash co-car wash would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and that no environmental impact statement will be required for reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for unlisted action dated June twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Move to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Let's see. Five to two? Or did you say?
No, I said yes.
No, I said yes.
Okay, so five to two.
I move the planning board defer action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included but not limited to the following one through ten.
Second. Move to second. Call to question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero to defer.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Good evening.
You can't hear?
It's very soft.
Okay. Well, everyone, just, you know, try to speak up into your mics as fast as you can. Okay, Locust Grove Crossings is up next. Move back. Good evening.
Yes, you have that.
Good evening. Christopher Lepino Labella Associates, representing the applicant.
I'm Jimmy Neshwatt, one of the owners of the property.
We're before you in May to discuss this thirty-two unit project on Route nine adjacent to the Greenbrier condominiums. Felt like it was well received as we have gone through the planning process on this quite extensively in the past. The, kind of the four major comments that we took from this last meeting with the planning board here was the placement of the EV chargers, which we've incorporated into our design here. We've also located the transformers so that they're on the southern side of the site, away from all the activity in terms of the development here. If you've looked at the landscaping plan, we've provided screenings surrounding them, with the exception of the front of them, as they're required to have that ten-foot clearance per central housing, with no instructions in front of them. We've also
Chris, could you speak into the mic just a little bit more?
Sure. We, we also slightly modified the radius as we discussed from our prior meetings with Greenbrier to slightly increase the radius of the cars coming into the existing access drive. As, when their cars queue there, they do have trouble for cars entering. And lastly, the other change that we made here was with regards to the EV charging stations, we ensured that we met the applicable code requirements in terms of grading so that they're also ADA assessable on each location.
Okay. All right. Been back a few times. Let's see, who's got this one? Kristen?
It's all May again. So it's on for a public hearing. Seeker review for an unlisted action subject to a coordinated review. The planning board did declare their intent to be lead agency in May. To date, no objections have been received. They do also meet, have, it has been thirty days since the planning board declared their intent to be lead agency, and the circulation had been sent out to interested and involved agencies. So if the board was so inclined this evening, you could act on a seeker determination. If so, the applicant would then be afforded the ability to go to the ZBA to seek their area variances that they require. So in your report, I, I'm recommending, excuse me, sorry. I'm recommending that you open the public hearing, adjourn the public hearing, adopt seeker, and defer action with comments at this time.
All right. Thanks, Kristen. Andy?
Yeah, most of our comments have been addressed. We have a few minor outstanding stone water comments that, you know, won't, you know, once they are addressed, it won't really affect the outcome of the determination. Question, you know, we received a letter from the project attorney about the drainage easement. I just want to clarify that that's in the process of being provided?
Yes. We are compiling the final edits to the drainage easement and agreement, along with the mapping of the easement due forward to Greenbrier's project attorney
Okay.
to review. And hopefully, we can get that executed.
But in concept, they've, they've agreed.
Oh, yes. We've been before their HOA on this, and we've met with their property management firm as well.
Okay.
So we've, we've worked with them extensively for about eight months on this.
All right. So, so in light of that, I'm, I'm okay with making that a condition if need be.
Great. Yeah, you need to have this proper, sure. At this point, I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Move to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on Locust Grove Crossings?
Anybody on Zoom wishes to comment on Locust Grove Crossing?
When do you think you're going to submit again for July, or if you get to the ZBA?
If, if we're fortunate enough to obtain the secret resolution this evening, we've made a submission to the zoning board for the July eighth meeting.
And I can back here for August?
And we will come back here in August, address any comments
All right.
in, in the event they grant the variance.
Seeing nobody answering for now, I move we adjourn the public hearing to August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Move to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Opposed? Sorry. Motion passes seven zero. All right, go around the board for comments on this one. Start with Nicole.
Yeah, not too much here. I did see a note from DOT stating that there's a section right in front of this project on Route nine that needs to be replaced and needs to be up to ADA standards. So that, was that something that was going to be done?
Yeah, I, I think DOT's comments, this, this particular sidewalk's very flat along this entire corridor here. And I, I don't know if it's necessarily an ADA issue. They've talked about that there is some sediment accumulating, which is indicative of maybe some settlement in the concrete in some areas. So we're going to take a look at that. And I think the ADA aspect of their comment was where we are cutting through the concrete sidewalks to make our water and sewer connections. They've asked that the new sidewalk we create be ADA assessable. And they've also asked that at the entryway of, for both Greenbrier and this project, that we provide ADA assessable ramps on either side of the point of access.
Okay. Yeah, because I think there's a bus stop that's not too far from there, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so, okay. All right, thank you.
Hey, Rocco?
No additional comments?
Nothing.
No comments?
Ben?
No comment.
Peter?
I think you've done a terrific job. Your use of the site, the architecture, I mean, it's really going to be an asset to the town. So, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll second that. We're sorry to see you delay it for a while, but now, but glad it's back. And I think it's good to have these nice looking apartments in that area versus the overgrown lot. I did have a question on, it looks like you have quite a bit of landscaping on here, but just want to make sure it's sufficient to the residential neighbors to the south, because it backs right up to their, back here, is right.
The landscaping we have here
Is there anything that gets left?
Is, if you recall, we not, we're not only incorporating a fence, but we added all this additional landscaping to the south. When we were doing this in twenty twenty-one, I could bring up the landscaping plan so that you could see it.
Yeah, take a look at just, I forgot about the fence, so that's good.
Yeah. There's an existing PVC fence, I believe, on the side of the commercial building across Route nine. We plan on continuing that all through the south side of the property.
Okay, great.
That'll give the See the extensive tree planting.
Could you share this growing? So we can all see that.
Yeah, just a concern about the home, home privacy.
Right, yeah.
It would help if I shared, right, Rocco?
Thank you.
There we go.
I know, I know we've talked about this in the past.
Yeah, so here, here's all the different trees. You know, we have
Yeah, we got a whole variety in there.
Naples and coniferous along there.
Yeah, I saw a lot of those trees. I was wondering about low growth as well, but you have the fence there. I forgot about that. So, all right. That's my two cents for now.
I move the planning board hereby determine that Locust Grove Crossing LLC, two seven three six dash two seven three eight South Road would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for reasons set forth for secret negative declaration for unlisted action dated June twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Move to the second for seeker. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Move the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included but not limited to the following one through nine.
Second. Move to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, good luck with the ZBA.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Central Park, New Projects in Town, KFC. Is this, is this somebody who watches Friends or something? Sounds like a Central person.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel.
I'll start. Denise from Donofrio, owner of Central Park, KFC.
Kevin Yarance, Lisca McCormick, Banvora's Architects.
Ron Donofrio, partner with my top dog. So here for Central Park. Thank you very much for allowing us to answer the comments that you guys graciously sent to us. And we sent, Denise had passed out. What I did was I took your comments and I highlighted them in blue for what I'd like to say. So this way, we could just go down and knock it out pretty quickly. And then I do have the ability to share on the screen.
Yeah, if you have Zoom to show your screen, you can see what
Okay. So that'll, we'll show the site plan and we'll show the elevations. So for that. If you'd like, I'd put that up first, or we can answer the comments first. It's your choice.
Let's see the, the site plan first, I think.
Just to clarify, I think it might be worth, you don't have to answer all of the comments for the planning board tonight, just because your next submission
Yes.
you'll, you'll have to do that in writing, and you've already got a great head start on it. So, you know, the, the ones that are more, I think
Yes.
you know, the, the bigger issues would be
Luckily, I, I was, I tried to put this all together, but luckily, I was guided by Eric and Chrissy to, you know, just the main things that if we needed to tell a little backstory, tell that backstory, but gloss over the others. So it's not a problem. So I appreciate that. Let me just bring this up for you guys. So this should be the newest one. So, do I have to turn my volume up on the, on the computer?
No.
Okay. No, I should keep that down because
Okay. So you guys can see this, correct?
We can see it. We have screens right in front of us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're seeing it, people out there in the
Okay. So I hope this helps if you need to ask any questions about this.
Put this a little lower right there. Good to see an unused building get used for something good.
Yeah, thank you.
Right.
Thank you. The next page on this is where, where pretty much the variances have to come in and we have to ask, answer some questions, is on the outdoor play area. The outdoor play area is, if you're following my cursor, starts here at the corner of the building, comes in, and then we made sure that we curved it into the existing storage facility that was there, that's still there. And we're open to, if you guys think we should knock that down, we'll knock that down. If it can stay, then we'll make the turn that way. Part of the reason we did that, it was suggested by the planning board at an informal meeting and our own engineers, that this allows fire trucks and EMS to be able to come and make this curve through this background, back of the building. that this allows fire trucks and EMS to be able to come and make this curve through this background, back of the building.
Right, versus being squared off there.
So there's plenty of room for that and we made sure that that would happen. I'm going to address something a little out of order in your comments. It has to do with temporary parking for delivery. That was one of the comments that came up. And I figured since the site plan is up, we'll show you what we're going to do. There really is no temporary delivery area any longer. Goodyear obviously had it right here in this Bay Area here. It was a garage door that goes up for deliveries and, you know, for tires, oil, whatever they were getting. And we don't have that need. So that's why part of the reason we're using that to block that off to do part of the very corner of the play area. With that said, the type of deliveries that we will have are from FedEx, UPS and the postal service. Small packages of, you know, leashes or door collars, things of that nature. No equipment, all of that will be delivered way before we're open and way before, you know, any public or pedestrians will be near there. And we have three of the eight operating doors that we could just lift open, drop any material for building, for build out, close them up, not a problem. So we don't really have any ongoing delivery service other than the small regular vans that you would get at your home.
So nothing, nothing big for food and?
No tractor trailers, foods, nothing, not at all. So what we did, we like the concept, though, of moving, you know, having a dedicated space. So we're going to take two of the parking spaces and we're going to stripe them and with signage that says for deliveries only, so that even the FedEx guy or the UPS guy can have a place to park where they're not near the front of the building. So we'll take it in the second row. And I've already talked to the landlord and he says it's a great idea, let's do it. So you'll see that in our, in our proposal at the next meeting. So basically, any, any other questions with this part of the site map at all? If I can move on so to speak.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I'll take that down and go here. I would like to show you the elevations now. So this is, let me increase this a bit, thank you. Is that, you guys can see that pretty well?
Yeah.
This thing's in the way here. So this is the front and the signage that you see on there is really just a placeholder. We have to actually get a variance. I spoke to Christie about, Christie about this. We're looking to make sure that we have space for three signs, one over the showroom, one over the whole Bay Area and one on the side on Route forty-four, which will need a variance. Our, our response to that, and that's jumping ahead a little bit for the zoning board request for that variance, is that when you have a code that says, you know, you can have a hundred foot sign, but you're, let's say, a Chinese restaurant or, you know, a laundromat and you're a suite in a building shopping center, that's understandable, can't have like, you know, three signs. But when you're a standalone building eighty-two, hundred and forty-five square feet, that's really has three sides to it. You know, it shouldn't be the same determination for a hundred foot sign. It'll kind of look like, you know, if you had the Empire State Building with one window. You know, like it just, just in relations and aesthetics, it just doesn't work.
Yeah, I mean, you just have to work with the ZBA to.
Yes, okay.
Say your case there and they will tell you whether.
Yes.
How many signs and.
Yeah. She had a great suggestion where she said take up that hundred feet that you're allowed and break it up, you know? And I'm like, beautiful, that's great. So if we can do that and stay within the hundred feet, you know.
Then you won't need it.
Then everybody's happy.
Right, exactly.
So we, we appreciate the, the thinking that's going on. So let me close these tabs. I'm sorry I wasn't able to put this all together, but the site plans and everything are like huge, huge files.
Yep.
Here's the floor plan. And I think you guys can see that, right?
Yep. Zooming a little maybe.
Little, any more than that?
I think that's fine, that's good.
It's fine. So basically.
We have a printed copy as well.
If you have any questions about this, we know this intimately. Utilizing the showroom for grooming and bringing the dogs in and, and having them leave at night. The back area is a sleep area, sleep pods and rest area. The front area of the warehouse space is a play area for all different sized dogs and different temperaments. They're segregated by their size and their temperaments. And, you know, so this way there's not a problem. Plus, we have a franchise edict that says no more than twelve dogs per enrichment handler. So that's much, you know, completely different than what you would see in most places. There's going to be twelve dogs per handler in a play area. They play, then they go to the rest pods, then another set of dogs are brought out to play. So that's, that's basically how that works in this area. Any questions on this?
No, that sounds good.
Cool, okay. So let's get to this bad boy here. Sorry, I'm trying to find it. Okay. Do you guys see this too as well?
Yes.
This is what I gave you guys in front of you. I don't know if you need it on here or we could just talk to it, it's up to you.
Just talk, it's fine.
Just talk, okay, cool. I can stop sharing then, correct?
Yep.
Okay, cool. All right, this makes it a little easier for me. The answer that I have for the first part of the application is that we really are a standalone building and an existing building. And really all we're looking to do is add a fence for outdoor play areas to the north and one corner of the front of the building. We, we basically would like to keep these comments on record that we're providing services to the community and that for a building that's been vacant for over three years, we have over five hundred people who have registered for the service already on our website. And they're all like clamoring for like, when are you opening, when are you opening? I said, we're trying, we're trying. So I just wanted to make that part of record to understand that we will be providing a much needed service. And, you know, we can't do it without those people and, you know, we want to provide that service as well. If we move down, there is a correction on the actual outdoor play groups. There was a concern about if you're outside with the dogs in the winter, we, the outside play area is not used after four thirty. So, and that's even during the regular season. It might go to five o'clock during the summer, but during the winter, definitely not past four thirty, weather permitting. So they don't just automatically go out and play in the play yard. They, you know, they're, they're rotated in and they won't be out past four thirty. So the times it was, our customer hours are from six thirty to six thirty at night or seven, but the, the activity of the dogs are stopped at four thirty. So I just want to make that clarified. There's now only two variances plus the signage that we have to do for the zoning board, so three in total. And we're addressing that tomorrow, delivering the package to the zoning department. So we could be on the July eighth agenda and then be able to then bring all the things necessary, the changes that you guys are requiring for July eighteenth. So that's, that's the, that's the plan. So I went over the loading zone already, so we don't have to go with that. Client drop offs, there is client drop offs of the dogs and they would generally stay. We did a, a review of all the other Central Park, which there are over fifty or sixty now. And most of the people stay for ten minutes, you know, chatting, making sure their dog is in, maybe picking up a leash or, you know, a little chew toy to take home or something like that. And that's about it, so they don't stay in the parking area. Number three, where the creation of a safe pedestrian environment is the principal goal of the town. We, we understand that, but it's really not our intention and at this time not the intention of the landlord owner to add any new construction to the parking lot. That, that would, if we were being put to do that, that would not only be a time burden, but a financial one as well. We understand the concept, you know, I'm a LEED green certified person, so I understand about, you know, pedestrian walkways and green and everything you can do. And this would be a huge undertaking for us at this particular time. That doesn't mean we'll rule it out in the future if needed.
If you have any walking customers.
Yeah, well, we, and to address that really quickly, we're not going to be the Goodyear that every two minutes cars are coming and leaving their cars and dropping up. And I don't know too many people that'll be walking their dog to our facility. They'll drive their dog usually for safety and on the way to work and things of that nature and pick them up. So, you know, it'll probably be less pedestrians than, you know, what you have experienced in the past.
I mean, are people going to pull up into a parking spot, see, get out, drop off the dog or there's a certain drop off area?
They go into a parking spot.
Parking spot.
Yeah, they run in with their dog, we take them right away and then they run out.
Okay.
So really it's less than ten minutes.
She's quicker than I am. So then on number four, when you, the EV chargers, I'm all for them. The landlord at this time is not. And for us to take on that burden would be a problem. I do have electric car, I do have solar panels at my house, so I, you know, I'm there. You don't have to convince me, I think it's a definite thing that we should do. But we can't personally do that financially at this time, especially that we have no electricity being run through the parking lot for our building space. There's no need for us to do that right now and that would be another financial burden as well. But we will press the landlord on this issue because I drive an electric car, so I would like to see that, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, mainly it's the people dropping off, so they're not staying long.
They're not staying long enough to get a charge.
So it would be for my benefit, pretty much.
Yours and any other workers.
Yes, exactly, and any other workers. So, but I did hear that Stop and Shop is either did put in an application or they're thinking of putting one in. So that could be a good thing. And I'll, I'll find that out for you guys as well. The enclosure for the. Yeah, everything else we're pretty much going to address at the next meeting. The, there is no, on number seven G, there is no ground mounted HVAC. There, it will be none on the roof as well, except for the one that's existing there. And the rest are going to be mini splits that'll be actually attached to the walls a foot or so below the roof so that we don't have to do any roof penetrations or anything of that nature. So there'll be about eleven or twelve of them according to the mechanical engineer.
All the way around or maybe in the back or?
Mostly in the back, yes, yeah, I don't think on the sides or the front at all, actually.
Okay, good.
Flood plane application, we're in the process of doing, that's on the A. Number nine. We revised already the planning board application to make sure it included the three areas we didn't check off. So I apologize for that. That's number nine, that was on Ron, so that was my mistake.
It's a process, there's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot.
And then Royal Carding.
Yes, and then Royal Carding dumpster area, this is just to address that with the MSW ways that's in the back. We're, we're already in talks with the landlord and they've been agreeable to extend the actual refuse enclosure that's there to accommodate two dumpsters. So this way then, instead of building a whole new one for us, they can have two dumpsters there. And that's in the back area and that's on the site plan as well. All right. The last, the, the last thing is the, do you want to hear the responses very quickly from the zoning board? There, and all the other departments that.
I'm doing.
No?
Not, not. Not necessary.
All right, you have it in front of you, so that's fine, you know? And, and we're okay with that as well. So basically, that's really it. We, we have a good team with Kevin and Dan from Hudson Land Design and Mark Belze from, who's our mechanical engineer. And we're all very excited to, you know, get going. And my last request, request on record to you guys is if there's any way that we could at least start as soon as possible some light or soft interior build out. That's a real, real big issue for us because the longer we wait, we're losing contractors that we already agreed to work with because they're taking other jobs. So now we have to find new ones and, you know, we're not collecting any revenue. So, you know, this is a big, big issue not to at least get started on the interior. And whatever you guys want us to do, we'll do. But we need, we need, we need some guidance and that to see if we can get the building department to agree with that while we're going through this process.
Yeah, I mean, we typically look for at least a conditional approval from this board. And then, you know, there's usually some time for to work through the conditions and get that all squared away before the plan is actually signed. And at that point, we're, you know, we certainly have done, made an exception and said, yeah, we can, we can let the interior work go as long as you recognize it's at your own risk and.
Yeah, of course, of course.
It's a little early right now. I mean, I'd like to at least know that the ZBA is granting the variances, you know, and, and that that's not an issue.
That's coming up soon.
And that's coming up soon, that's July eighth, right?
Perfect.
And the, and the planning board is the eighteenth, they're planning to come back on the eighteenth, right?
Yes, of course.
So.
So maybe at that situation with the ZBA done and you guys, hopefully we did everything correctly.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, we, I think the idea is that we'd like to get everything squared away for the eighteenth, right? And get the conditional approval and then maybe we can sign off on the interior work at that point.
That'd be awesome, yes.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your presentation, I'll go to Eric for the department's recommendations.
Sure. This is a secret meets criteria for secret type two action, so there's no further environmental review required. The applicant, and the applicant will need to go to the ZBA for the request of variances. And with those variances, the planning board may want to wait until the variances are considered by the zoning board before considering site plan or special use permit approval. It is advertised for public hearing, so the board, the recommendation is for the board to open the public hearing and adjourn it. As discussed, July eighteenth seems like would be an appropriate date for that adjournment. And the recommendation would be to defer action, adjourn the, adjourn the public hearing and defer action to that time.
Would want to make clear too, the submittal deadline for July eighteenth is Monday, right? So, and I know it's tight, but you know that, you're, you're working on it and everything, okay.
Listen, I was on a treadmill twice this, this week for my, for my nuclear stress test. And I'm telling them about what I have to do tonight. So they're going like, are you sure, you know, like, you want to take this now? I go, yeah, I gotta get it all.
Just want to make, just want to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Eric is going to help guide you through some of this stuff too.
Yes, thank you.
Andy?
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of my comments have been discussed. You know, the flood, flood plane, flood zone application and need for flood vents and the fence, you know, that's, that's in there. You know, comments about the lighting, I guess there's no lighting for the play area, that's great. I have concerns about the area in front of the current garage doors. People tend to park, you know, people like to park in front of garage doors if they think they're a garage door. So I do think that we need something that indicates it's not supposed to be a parking area at a minimum striping. And then just to clarify, there is a note on your site plan that says that's a loading zone, so just to.
Yeah, that was, that was a mistake, yes.
Yeah. And then we do need the training movement plan, I understand you're working on that. And then, you know, it's just some notes about the animal waste, we want to make sure that that doesn't end up in catch bases.
I, and I'm submitting a plan on that that's really cool. We hired an actual company that picks up for horses. So at our expense, we're making sure daily we're having a separate can, like a medical waste can type of thing, where that goes into there and then it's going to be picked up and not thrown in MSW or anything else or anywhere else. So that plan, you'll get a copy of that, you'll see who we hired and come and check.
Great, great.
Very good, that was one of my questions too.
Yeah, yeah, and then in the construction details, you know, there's some, some improvements, especially the sun shades. You know, I think the board will be interested to see those as well, so.
Yes.
Great, thanks, Andy. At this point, I move that the planning board determine that proposal meets the criteria for a secret type two action pursuant to secret part six seventeen point five, see sub nine and or eighteen and no further environmental reviews required.
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero. Move, we open the public hearing.
Second.
Move to the second, at all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero. Opposed, motion passes 7-0. Anyone wish to comment on Central Park?
Anyone in the room? No, right, okay, anyone on Zoom?
No hands waving. Appears not at this time, so I move we adjourn the public hearing to July 18th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 7-0. And we'll go around the planning board for comments here. Start with Nicole.
I think you answered all my questions.
Yeah.
While you were going through it and then I was reading it after you stopped. So I don't have any questions right now.
Great, Nicole answer.
Some clarifications. There, I noticed you, you list numbers for boarding dogs up to 7D capacity. But I don't see anything on what you expect for your daycare.
We can add that, it's between, it's about between 10 and 15 per night when we're fully staffed.
That part I'm talking about.
Oh, for daycare, oh, for daycare.
So what is the total?
It can never be more than. It can never be more than the, than the 80, 70 to 80 dogs, that's the maximum.
So that's the capacity, because this says boarding capacity.
Yeah, if we don't have room for them to rest, we can't take them.
Okay.
Yes, that's the capacity.
And then, I, I, I noticed on your website that there were a lot of services that this particular franchise offers. Are you, are you going to offer all of those services as well?
We have to, yes.
Oh, you have to.
And we found that they're, they're really, really good services for the, it seems that daycare is the number one. Grooming is, is slowly coming up to the second. Boarding, everybody is asking for, for vacation or what have you, and that's seasonal. You know, that will increase more during holiday time. But the, and the market is smaller. And training though has been a big thing also, puppy training and things of that nature.
Right, right, right. So. So the fencing that you're going to have around the play area, is that going to, what, what type of fencing is that?
That's, we had discussed that, vinyl feds, eight feet high, it can't be white, I was told. So we have a nice off tan for that. And there's no slats in it that are visible or where a dog can get out or anything like that, so.
Okay, what, have you had, but you have any idea about what the noise levels might be?
Yeah, we have a report that's in the 77 page that says that, and it shows at another Central Park that's open. There's a whole analysis there that it doesn't, doesn't.
Same size as yours?
Yes, exactly, yes.
Okay.
They all, they all have to be at least 6,000 to 8,000 squiffy.
Okay, thank you.
And it's, it's not surrounded by any local residential, right nearby?
Correct.
Right, plus.
Yes, I do have a question, I think it's for you though. I see there's a lot of flood insurance stuff here, has that area actually flooded? Where they're going to be located?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter if it's shown on the map, if it's shown to be a map there.
Hundred year start zone, hundred year map. But I was just curious if.
I am not aware, I mean, the last major flood I believe was Irene, I don't know if it flooded during that storm.
I mean, you do have the Casper Kill, right, that runs right in along Burnett, so.
That's probably why it's on the list.
Yeah, yeah.
The reason why I put those in the packet is so that you guys see that the owner is, you know, taken care of in case there is any situation. Plus, in our own internal insurance, we'll add flood insurance as well for any equipment and things of that nature.
Okay.
Great project, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, do you have one other facility like this operating?
No, no, we don't. There's, there's 50 to 60 across the country. This is our first.
This is your first?
Yes.
We expect to have three, but this will be our first. There's literally thousands of these across the country, it's this, this part.
Different names.
This part of, yeah, there's Dogtopia, there's Camp Bow Wow, there's Club Canine, there's a lot of these. It's just this community, which is why we've seen so much community support everywhere we go to try to help us to get open. There's just none here, there's just nothing like what we offer. The closest thing to it is probably Dogtopia in Fishkill, which doesn't have any outside space and is a little bit different in nature.
There's one in Little Ridge as well, but it's up there, it's close to Popeye.
Yeah.
Any dogs you take in, I'm sure, I didn't know, couldn't see it in here, you'll make sure that they're all, they have all the required vaccinations.
We can't take a dog in until it has the three vaccines that are required by our franchise. We're very specific about health and safety and the state, of course. And we also do a behavior assessment for dogs coming into daycare to make sure that they have the temperament for, for daycare as well.
Good. So you won't take Commander in?
Not too spicy, not too, no, Commander is not, Commander's too spicy.
There's a, there's a term in the, among the franchises that the dogs can't be too spicy. Okay. Some Secret Service men there.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
You had me at hello.
Thank you.
Yeah, as, as I, yeah.
It's so New York, it's just incredible, right, it's so New York.
As I said, it's great to create use of this old building and good, good to see they will open this up. And I think we will waive the EV charger issue at this point.
Thank you.
And let's see, what else did I have a question? You'll have to, you'll, you'll look at the signs. And you answered the waste handling process. I did see on your plan, there's like, in the storage room it shows stairs, is there a basement that was building here?
No, it's a mezzanine storage.
It's a mezzanine, it's a, oh, so it's just.
Yeah. Just a storage.
To have additional storage.
Yep, yeah.
Okay. Didn't think there was a basement, especially the flood area, so. Confused there. All right, guess that's it.
I move that the planning board defer further action on application, subjects to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. And set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and witness inclusive up and not limited to the following 1 through 9.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 7-0, you're good to go.
Thank you so much.
See you next month. Good luck with your back here, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Does anybody need the original plan? All right, we've got a few adjournments.
Thank you.
Deal with.
Sure.
Dan, 68 Van Wagner Road is up next.
Staff recommends that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to July 18th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes 7-0. Beacon Residential?
Staff recommends that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to August 15th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 7-0. Casper Kill South Road.
I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to July 18th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 7-0. Extra space self-storage?
I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to July 18th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 7-0. Lanzaville Final?
Staff recommends that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to July 18th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 7-0.
Staff recommends.
Manor Hill.
Yeah, the staff recommends that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to July 18th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 7-0. And Metro Roofing Supply?
I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to July 18th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 7-0 as well. At this point I will be, allow public comments on other items on tonight's agenda.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 7-0. Now's your chance to comment on any remaining items on tonight's agenda.
Come on up.
Come on down. That's right. Hi, Yvonne.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yep.
I feel so little. Hi, first thing I would like to request is new microphones in the tap.
Yeah, especially when the AC's on, right?
Because you're sharing some too, so it's very hard, it sounds very muffled back there. So, my name is Yvonne Lobby, I haven't met some of you, I'm on the town's Historic Preservation Commission. And I'm town resident. And I wanted to, many of you I know, thank you. I appreciate you guys letting me be a part of the Hudson Heritage redevelopment process. Thus far, it's been nine years since I've been involved, I feel old. And it's very easy to lose sight of the details. And, you know, hindsight is 2020, right? So I know that before you are some comparisons of the as approved versus as built. And I know you guys have probably talked about the differences or looked at the differences, but there's a couple of things that I would like to point out. The rooftop screening, the chain link fence, is that even necessary? I don't know. If it is necessary, then there has to be a better solution because it looks very tacky. The, the building, I'm sorry, I don't know the number of the building. Building F, the corner with the peaked roof, we had a long time ago discussed, and I think you guys requested a weather vane instead of a finial. Although I would prefer not a chicken, I think, I don't know if that's appropriate for there. I don't know what would be, but maybe just a traditional leather vane. The light fixtures, some of them are appropriate, they were approved that way. But some of them are actually more historical looking, they're more vintage antique looking. So they seem to have bought bulk of the one style and just applied it across the whole site.
Yep, I was hoping to.
And then I think the biggest, you know, difference is the faux doors, the faux windows and, and anything with the, the finishes that are meant to look like from the main building with the bluestone and the limestone. They're quite artificial looking, it feels a bit like Disney World. And as far as I could tell, and I haven't seen the actual architectural build details, I thought that they were supposed to be built into the building. Like, you know, even though they weren't going to be used, they're artificial, there's recesses, it looks like the door is part of the door frame in the building. So those are things that I wanted to point out, I don't know if that's what was on the agenda. And I should say that I do have my own regrets with regards to CVS. I missed the opportunity, and my husband pointed it out, on the peaked roof of, above the entry at CVS, that should have probably been more in a Victorian style, you know, little details, but it would have tied it together. And additionally, the CVS brick, the facing is really kind of not appropriate for the site. It feels, it's just a different color, it doesn't have any grouting or mortar, it just looks flat. And this is all cosmetic, so I, I know, but again, this is stuff that came before you guys and approved. Oh, so the only other thing I had to say is that, is it possible when going forward, if we could, if it's possible to review? I should say, up to this point, we've been reviewing buildings piecemeal, right? And we haven't been able to see the entire picture. And I know that, for example, CVS had its own architect and, and the next L is, is probably its own architect, which is design development. Is it possible to request the future buildings and have a drawing that shows, you know, even if it's just like an outline, like the massing and what the overall scale and appropriateness is for, for the future buildings?
Context, basically.
Thank you, thank you. Not an architect, so I don't know. And then the other thought is also with all the future buildings to request physical samples, material samples of facings and trim, lighting for that matter. And then I guess my only other question, and I don't expect anybody to answer this, is, and I don't mean to be critical, but I kind of have to, I have to be, how did we get to this point where they passed, they got TCO, but it's clearly not matching what was approved? I don't know if that's where that falls, and I'm sorry, Mike, I feel bad. But those are, those are my thoughts. So, thank you for listening and I look forward to working with you guys again.
Yeah, there's a lot more to go to this project, so thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? George Finn's got his hand raised. George?
Yes, good evening, board members. My comment is for the waiver of the site plan approval for number 42 Shamrock Circle. It's the short-term rental. And myself, other members of Ireland, the States, were at the last planning board meeting, or, or excuse me, the last town board meeting when they set the date for the public hearing on this project. And there were many residents that were, were opposed to it. There's a, a local Facebook group that many comments were also voiced in opposition to. And I just wanted to continue to, at every opportunity, voice opposition to, and I believe the proper term is a non-owner occupied, short-term rental in a residential neighborhood. I believe it is inappropriate to place a business in a solely residential area. I mean, we have a, a circular drive off of a dead end road and it is all R20 except for this short-term rental. So I'd ask the board, I asked the town board and I'm asking the planning board on every chance to vote no on every opportunity for a short-term rental in not only this, our neighborhood Shamrock, or Ireland, the States, but any solely residential neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity to write comments.
All right, thank you, George.
And anyone else again on the Zoom? If you are on Zoom, you can unmute yourself or raise your hand.
You're not on Zoom.
See? Sorry.
Signal them we continue the meeting.
I'd like to just make one quick comment, if I could. Our town is blessed with many dedicated public servants. And we're going to, we're about to lose one, his name is Chief George Finn.
Yep. I was about to say.
He sleeps with one eye open so that everyone else in the community can sleep with both eyes closed. And I just think we should thank him, he's been a, a great supporter of this board and the community. And I think he's going to be missed, and I just want to thank him.
He's got, given us great, great comments over the years, for sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you, George.
Reviewing the plans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, best of luck in retirement. All right, thanks, Peter. Move we continue the meeting?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 7-0. Moving forward, the next one up is.
It's inheritance lot line, right?
Yep. That's inheritance lot line. There it is.
So, who's presenting on this one, is it Kyle? I see him. All right. There he is, okay. Speak up, Kyle.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Flabella Associates, here are the applicants for Hudson Heritage. So, we were last before you, I believe it was for the previous subdivision, so what we called the 2023 subdivision at the time. A condition of that approval was to combine it with the 2022 subdivision that you guys had reviewed and approved previous year. I'm going to optimistically say we're about 99% through resolving all conditions on that approval. Part of that process between the owner and the SD, they're under contract to buy the completed portion of the shopping center. During that process, we, you know, going back and forth with the owner and their buyer, determined that an additional revision would be needed to the subdivision, so. And let me, let me share my screen here. So, and let me, let me share my screen here. Okay, so that subdivision, just to refresh your memory real quick, involved the last three, four and five, it was split up into 3A through 3E, 4A through 4F, 5A and 5B. A portion of lot four, what was previous lot four, also became lot 17. So it was determined that an additional lot line that had not previously been considered was, was going to be needed in support of the impending sale. So what was formerly lot 5B on the eastern side of the property did not include any of the land behind Shop Right, which is now lot 4A. That land is mostly vacant, there are no drainage or other utilities, which I know is one of CGL's comments was to confirm that. So I can confirm it, but I'll, I'll provide them with, you know, something showing that. It, it does include the rail trail extension, so in order to, which will be extended as part of phase two of the project. So in order to maintain control over that land, it was determined that we needed to make this lot line adjustment to keep the ownership of that lot with the developer as opposed to the entity that will be, you know, buying the shopping center. Their interest in the project is really just to, to manage that shopping center. So, you know, we were determining where to move the lot line. Essentially, what we came up with was this line here, which increases the flexibility for the future. So the land's really not doing good for Shop Right, so, you know, just adding all of it to 5B. Nothing new is proposed, we have no changes to the site plan that we're proposing. But it's just, you know, just to keep all that land part of the current owner's lands. So that's kind of the long and short of it, there's really not much, you know, else to this application, but, you know, here turning, any questions?
Sounds pretty straightforward, thanks, Kyle. Eric?
Sure.
Sure. Lot line revision is a type two action, not subject to seeker review. This is predicated on a completion, signature and filing to create the lots that are proposed for this lot line revision. So if the plan, if that would be one of the conditions of approval, an express condition of approval. So once that's done, it, there's a couple of minor comments to file the easements, the deeds that are required with the appropriate language required by the town code. We have a recommendation to identify this type two action and to grant the lot line revision conditionally with the comments attached.
All right, thanks, Eric. Andy?
I don't really have anything else to say on this one.
All right. Let's go around the board for any comments from board members. Peter? Nicole?
Nothing.
Yep, nothing here, it looks, looks like a good to do.
Okay. I move that the planning board determine that the proposal meets criteria for seeker type two action pursuant to seeker part 617.5C16 and no further environmental review is required.
Second.
Move to the second for seeker, all in favor?
Aye.
Propose, motion passes, seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional lot line revision approval through a lot line revision of lots 4A and 5B and Hudson Heritage major subdivision amended section one, and also grant a one-time 60-day time extension as permitted by town code of said approval from August 19, 2024, four to October 18, 2024, subject to the following one through three.
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Propose, motion passes, seven to zero. You can go, Kyle.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
And next up is Hudson Heritage Architectural Review.
Good timing, right? I knew just how much time I had.
All right. Is there anyone dealing with architectural review for presenting?
Yeah, well, yeah, I think Joe and, and the architect are going to entirely come and present. Yep.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the board. Good evening, members of the board, my name is Aoris Peña. I work with design development architects in White Plains, and we were the designed architects and project architects for several of the buildings on, on Hudson Heritage, except for the CBS and the, the Shop Right, which are the other ones that are...
Could you speak up just a little bit?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Say better now? Okay, sorry about that. And I guess in general, we just, for the most part, we were asked many times that in order for the, the project to be approved, we have to, we had to include within the buildings most and a lot of what's on context there now, which I would, I think we've done, as far as design, we've, we've done it. We've shown, starting at the basis of the building, a lot of stone. We've shown brick, a lot of masonry. We've shown a lot of cornices, the awnings. We've mimicked a lot of the archways that are, that are there now, including also bandings throughout the buildings. And if you look at the buildings now, they appear as if they've been there for years. As the vegetation around it grows, they're going to see more in context with what's there now. I would like to share my screen if possible.
Yeah, we started off with, you know, negotiated a whole architectural palette for the whole project.
Yes, yes.
Have you guys been to the site?
Yeah.
What do you think, how's it look?
Multiple times.
Looks good.
Well, there's, there's some concerns, some issues I have, but we'll get into it.
I believe I'm sharing now.
Yeah, we see it.
And I guess to start off with, with building D, this was the, out of the buildings that we're going to show, B, D and, excuse me, D, F and L. This was the first, one of the first buildings to be completed. And as I mentioned before, we've kept, with a lot of the, and I wouldn't say all, but a lot of what's there now, as far as the, the stone bases, the cornices, the, the brick, the openings throughout. And this is an example of the plaza that was in question. It's just a comparison, and yes, there is some roof screening that we were asked to provide in order to, to avoid the visual impacts of the HVAC units that are on top. But for the most part, here, I think we're pretty close to what was approved. You can see that on the top left-hand corner for the west elevation.
I guess that was my, you know, my take was the, you know, the type of screening you use was just kind of a fence of some sort. For the, so it kind of stands out, that's why... Is there slats even in that, or is it just the...
There, yeah, the, the picture doesn't show the slats, they've since been installed, so it's, it's...
Then that makes more sense with slats, but still. There's other types of screening that might, might be more appropriate for, for a historical area.
I mean, we, we centered the units as far back as we could, but it's almost, with the size of these buildings, it's almost impossible not to...
Yeah, yeah.
Not to see them. Yeah. All throughout, we set them back strategically. We went to the site and did aerial studies and, and had drones and just placed them as far remote from the, in order to lessen the visual impact, but...
I'm glad you did that effort, at least, but there's a topography there, you know, so if you park up near, higher near Shop Right, you're looking down on that kind of thing.
I mean, it, it, the site itself has a lot of contours, so as the project progresses, there'll be different parts of the, of the site itself where you will be able to see these units. And we did an, I mean, extensive studies of how to less impact the, the public. And we tried to strategically place all of them, or the ones that impacted the, the, created the visual impact. And those were placed more or less where we, where we asked them to place them.
I mean, yeah, I mean, any board members can chime in here with the comments on it, but...
I mean, just to...
My concern was some of the, I mean, like when we did the Burger King building, they actually used some real stone facing in different places. And here, here they had the stone base, but it feels like you didn't use as much stone in other places where it just pictured it being more, more... You know, I knew you're, I could take the head, the big heavy stones from the old buildings and put them in, but at least some kind of stone facing for some of those details.
We, we...
Nice versus just painted.
Yeah. I mean, part of the study was to, again, we used a lot of the materials, but in some cases, like the, the stone, for instance, they were 700 pounds.
Yeah. Obviously, we understood that could not be reused, but...
But you could use stone.
Some kind of stone facing.
Yeah, a, a stone facing, what we did in, in, in order to sort of like mimic some of the stone and some of the, like, at the water tables, at the banding, what we did was we introduced a EFS, which is like an exterior insulation finish system that has like a coating on it. And we used this for the water bases, we used it for the cornices. And then they were painted as per the approval.
Yeah, I think the cornices came out nice and, you know, looking like the, the, the format that was planned on. Just some of the details. And the other thing that caught my eye, I guess, was the, all the wall pack lights, you know, turned out looking a little more modern than, than I was picturing it from originally, in my mind, anyway. That's what's there now. Anyone else have any comments?
I just wanted to point out the, you know, again, I think the, the reason I wanted to make sure that we came back and talked about this here in particular is because I think going forward, we, we, I, I want to make sure we do this a little bit differently. We did, you know, approve a lot of these buildings back during the, the COVID time. And we weren't, for example, taking materials and samples and things like that at those meetings because we were virtual and, and so on. And, you know, I, I think as, there's still a lot of this project to go. And I think, you know, there's an opportunity for us to be just more detail-oriented and careful on future buildings at the site. And that's, that's really why I wanted it to, to come back. I don't know that there's much we can do, as I said in my staff report...
Yeah, yeah.
At this point, about what's there.
I mean, you got the look of it, but that 100% aren't ten, from what...
I, I agree, yeah.
From my standpoint, as far as materials go. I mean, the other thing that stood out to me and one of the others is the... Maybe if you flip to the next one, the windows just kind of stuck on the looks like versus, you don't, you don't see them as inset, like a regular window would be, or... Or maybe that's just the way it is for faux windows, it's just a... But again, you need them.
To the, to the comment from, to the comment from Ivan, which was a very good one about the TCO, you know, those, those windows were actually not on the building at all at the time of the TCO. Of course, whenever we get to that point in the building construction, we're always under a lot of pressure to get tenants in, right? Who are, in this case, a local business that was trying to get into the building. So they got their TCO with the understanding that the windows were still going to be put in and then, and something was done, obviously, but this is not exactly what we were expecting. So I think that's, again, you know, I think going forward, we, I, you know, I want to make sure we spell out for, for these guys exactly what it is that we expect in a little more detail, so.
Yeah, we understand that faux windows are needed sometimes, but the way they stick out from the buildings just seemed, seemed a little odd to me.
Correct.
Any, anyone else have comments?
How much more has to be built up there?
Well, the residential.
There's, there's...
There's still a few more, there's still some commercial too.
There's still some commercial buildings, there's as many as 750 residential units that would still, could still be built up there. There's, there's, yeah, I know you're, we, you're newer to the board, but there's a, we should share with you the development master plan and, and so on for that project at some point.
The master plan, yeah, absolutely, we have a big thick book of here's all the architectural elements you take from the old historic buildings and reuse them.
So you want to try to make it look historical?
Right.
Well, yeah, it's right there.
In that line?
That's why we have some of these, you know, gray and white threadings over the doors and the different things that were taken from the original buildings that were getting knocked down.
The development master plan, I, I think is on the town website, if you want to review it, it's there.
Okay, great.
Well, I think we'll send it, we'll make, send it to...
Yes, send the link around again.
Yeah. Because we are going to be starting, I know, you know, in talks with the, the developer, we are, of course, starting to talk about the next phases. And you met John Stein here, who was interested in doing the first phase of residential. You know, and, and so I think there is an opportunity for us to sort of reset a little bit on, on our approach, so.
When you got the pitched roofs in the, in the right spots and the tower elements and the, and the cornices and all that look good. It's just the things that stuck out to me are the windows, as I said, the wall packs were different than, than the plan with that, so you guys got to hold up.
If you haven't been up there recently, that, you know, they have, as they're working towards getting COs for these buildings, they are, they've gotten most of the landscaping in at this point. You know, the, the public space in front of the CBS is now pretty much complete, I believe it's complete. You know, so I haven't been up there in the nicer weather to see how people are using the space, but I, I don't know if you plan to have any food trucks in the space anytime soon, but...
We were looking to get a food truck in last year, but the town didn't have a permit yet for the food truck.
Yeah, they, we have those.
Now, so now you have them, so we'll get more, more and more people wanting to come in now they can apply to the town to do that.
Yeah, that area's looking nicer, and I'm glad the landscaping was finally put in, it looks good and the...
And the art wall's complete.
And I like the crosswalk, the brick pattern that came out.
Yes, that just got done last week, came out good.
So that all looks good.
I, I guess kind of wonder, why, why were the lights changed out? That's not even part of the building structure, it's, it's a fixture on the outside of the building. Why couldn't you do that?
I'll be honest with you, that was a decision before my time, and they started with building and worked over to building C, and then approval went through to do it throughout the whole entire lot three and four.
Which is all matching, yeah.
Yep.
And again, that was during COVID, something we overlooked, I guess. I think somebody said something about the, the food truck wall is not, is warping or something?
Well, the, the, yeah, I think, you guys worked with Marist, I believe, right? On the, on the art wall, art?
We did work with Marist, and you were talking about the one panel toward the north is a little warped. That was warped before we put in, Marist had those for about six months, and they had them on the ground and they were working them, so they came back warped from Marist. And, you know, we, we screwed it up as best as we could, and it actually hasn't warped further, but...
Okay.
And is your intention to change those out from time to time with Marist?
My intention was, yeah, every September to do a, a project with Marist as they circle through their beginning of their school year, with their students doing a project to get graded on throughout the midterm. And that was one of the projects, so, that we adopted to Marist for that purpose.
Sounds good.
So we maybe work on the materials or figure out a way to make that not happen?
That'll also keep it, keep it from degrading further, if it's there for many years, it won't...
Right, right.
It won't last.
That'd probably be up to the new owner at that time, but yeah, that's, that was our intention as well.
All right. Anything else that you guys can add, think about, ask with this time?
Yes, we've been to the Sango there all the time, I like it there, it's a busy place. I think it's a good thing that we're doing there, you know, people like it.
Yep. Get it to, get to some of the restaurants there, Jersey Mike's and the others.
Yeah. I can't wait for the north entrance to be open, to make it easy.
Shop Right's great.
Oh, yeah, very shortly.
As far as the other things go, my old boss, Dennis Nicholas, from Milwaukee, used to say, when I say, why do I have to do that, he say, because them are the roots. So them are the roots.
The uh, good comment, Ben, the uh other thing I had to ask was the uh. The other entrance, the north entrance, because the traffic is getting tight as it's getting busier. Do you know, you guys have any insight of when that's going to open?
We're hoping to off, possibly late August, early September.
Okay.
We got the Boneyard now and up to the Circle, the uh tear drops are going in now for the curb, the mounting curbs are going on the roundabout. Uh working with uh Furry to get the light on, and the trench ran in as part of uh. Andy Swip in the front from DOT, so uh the trench is going in. Late Au- late August, um. And uh all the curbs will be in by the end of this week, end of next week, rather, for the uh roundabout, the metal curbs and the tear drops.
All right, so it's moving along.
It's moving along.
Any comment on the director's building, the beech tree didn't look, it looked like something.
We've been following the the mandate from the town on all the uh the firts for that. Um it does have some branches that need to be probably pruned off for new growth.
I don't know if it had.
I would say eighty percent of it is is okay, but some of the low, the low branches probably need to be pruned for new growth.
Okay, I don't know if it got attacked by these caterpillars that are attacking other trees.
I didn't notice it, I mean, the trailer's right there, but uh we do have um a four uh quarterly cycle going in for fur and pest control on that tree.
Okay.
As per the the maintenance agreement with the town.
Just make sure everything stays stays off the.
Yeah, we actually cleared all around the base of that tree in the last uh two weeks. For pests, so it's all cleared out underneath it, so there's no overgrowth underneath the tree itself.
Okay, great, thanks for addressing that. And uh any any plans you know of to share from the director's house at this point?
Uh at this point, no, we're just sticking with the uh the acceptance letter as far as uh keeping it mulled bald at this point, I know Ed has plans for it. Um he is getting it out there to do something with it. Um but as far as uh my path, I'm concerned about getting Hudson Heritage Drive open.
Yeah.
Uh to the Circle and finishing out three and four with the town and getting our COs.
Yeah, that'll be big once that happens, so.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for coming in and sharing, do you think you got some more comments?
Forward.
Anything else?
Well, I've got, I've got a couple of comments, one is that I I've been up there quite a bit, I see, I see a lot of car traffic. And sometimes they're pretty speedy, so I don't recall if there's any s- uh any speeding signs up there or anything, s- uh s- the speed limit signs. I see very little, if any, pedestrian walking at this time, maybe because uh maybe we'll we'll see more. Once the uh, once the apartments.
Apartments right in there.
But uh but but the zipping around of the cars is can be.
We currently don't have any speed signs on property.
Could be heroin at times.
Yeah, I don't, uh, none was required by the town on Winslow Gate Road.
It's got the crosswalks every still off, so I mean, it should be, and once that, or that entrance opens, I think that'll help uh.
Well, I hope so, I I'm just, that was just my comment, is that especially. Trying to make a left as you're coming out of Shoprite, then on a left onto Winslow, these guys coming around, they don't always see you and they're not slow. They they like it to speed in there, but that's, but that's the American driving habit, I guess. But it's just, but that's, but that's a comment that can play into the future.
Unfortunately, there is a little, a little congestion here and there, but all in all, I'm glad to see that the space is um getting busier and busier as we get more tenants, so.
Well, that's good, I mean, I I I think the project is good, it's just I have to make sure that we get all of these other. Ameliorations in there so people aren't run over or whatever.
Oh, I did think of one other thing, there's that, I I just drove by it uh last night, the uh. The old entrance has still, it still has one of the old, the old posts there.
The old pillars, yes.
Pillar, and we're hoping that can be saved in some way or.
My intention is to keep that pillar where it is and do some kind of monument, talking with Yvonne. Um. Actually, Yvonne, have we spoke about that yet? So Rick and I were talking about saving that pillar where it was, fencing it around and doing some kind of monument in front of that pillar, leaving it where it is, we do have the head to the other pillar, we tried to save it. Now, this is before my time, this is coming from Rick DeCola, who actually.
Yeah.
Developed the front of that property there. We had pieces of the original one that did come down.
Yeah.
Accidentally, um, our intention is to save that where it is, shore it up, get it structurally sound and do some kind of monument for uh for the historic society.
Okay, that sounds good, Yvonne, Yvonne's the one to work with on that, I guess. She knows the site pretty well, this.
Very well.
All right. Anything else?
It's just a motion to accept architecture as uh as constructed for those buildings, three buildings.
I move to accept the architecture for these buildings as constructed.
Second. Moved in seconded, called to question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good for now, got our comments for going forward.
Does he need to shut down?
Uh you need to shut down.
Oh, yeah, you need to, oh, I can do it from here, actually.
Kick him off.
Yeah, let's see.
Next up is Vassar College Facility Housing.
Uh Mr. Chairman, Dave Kaminsky?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you, I saw that you were on there, uh we just.
I'm gonna, I'm going to need to share a screen, and I still have that individual screen up.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I thought I could. He's coming, all right. Hold on one second, David, why can't I kick you off? There we go, all right, good, thank you.
Yeah, you're good, David.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening, how are you all?
Good, how are you?
Great.
So you got some construction over your way?
Oh, yes. So I'm gonna make just a um brief presentation tonight, I know it's been a long night for you. Uh I'm sure most of you have seen uh what is going to occur at the intersection of Booker and Raymond and New Hackensack Road. With the construction the DOT has started. Uh I wanted to bring this up just to show uh the color rendering of the right turn in. That will go on to Watson Road and right turn out, out, out of the faculty housing area here. I think it's important to give some background as to how this came about, because I I think Mike Walti knows, but maybe most of you don't know. Is that uh New York State DOT came to Vassar, I'm going to say over a year ago. And talked about the all of the different driveways that Vassar has that enter onto Raymond Avenue here. Uh you recall when we talked about faculty housing, there was several people that got up and uh I'm not going to say complained, but.
Wow.
Um made made sta- made statements uh rega- regarding Vassar Lake Drive, uh Orchard Lane. Uh Chapel Road and all the movements that were happening in this area.
Yep.
So uh there was some give and take between Vassar and New York State DOT. And what you will see constructed is that Chapel Road, which right now is only supposed to have a right turn. Uh and uh trucks are supposed to, are allowed to make a left turn, that's going to be closed off with an island. That island will continue down, it's also going to close off Vassar Lake Drive. There'll no longer be a left turn movement from Vassar Lake Drive onto Raymond Avenue. Same thing, same thing with Orchard Lane and Watson Road, this entrance here. It is the main entrance to where the faculty housing was built. The existing left turn onto Raymond will be eliminated, and there will only be a right turn out. I should note while we're here that the uh RRFD uh uh crosswalk. With the flashing lights will be constructed by DOT to match into the sidewalk in the improvements we did in this area where the bus stop is.
Right, we talked about that originally.
Yep. The the only driveway that will remain, that will be a full function driveway, is this uh driveway that goes into the ba- basically the facilities area. Of Vassar, and that will continue to allow, if you're coming, uh, I'm going to guess I'm, I'm going to say south. On Raymond, you'll be able to make a left hand turn into Vassar, and there'll be full movements, both right and left hand turn into this area here. So going back, that was one of the main reasons when we saw what what DOT was requesting. We asked for an additional driveway, uh and Vassar is built, excuse me, uh N- New York State DOT is building that one hundred percent at uh. Well, let's just say our cost, uh a- a- all of us sitting in the room.
Yeah, our tax dollars at work.
Yes, sir. So uh that's the background of how this right turn in, right turn out came came about. You will recall that as a part of the approvals of faculty housing, we uh entered into a deferred parking agreement, and that parking was. Along this section of Watson Road with this driveway coming in, it necessitated a modification. So the next thing I want to show you, this is a uh, this is the plan that we submitted. And there was a suggestion in the notes that came back for these four parking spaces to be relocated to the left. Unfortunately, when I went out to the site to look, I should, when I went out to the site. I I found unfortunately that this survey or the plan used does not show a corral. That is located in this area that has a central uh central Hudson transformer. And a refuse area, so I have some photos just to show you, here's the new driveway where it's coming in. This is the corral, this grass area here is where the four spaces would would uh would actually go. Coming down, here's the corral, so the parking spaces are right in here, I think what we can try to do is move them as far left as we possibly can. Even if we have to maybe modify the sidewalk a little bit. Um but we could probably move them into this area and take them, because I I know the idea is you're you're trying to remove them a little bit further away. From the driveway that's coming in. Here's the, here's the inside of the corral that has the the central four, so uh again. In this area here, you've seen this grass area, we could, we'll move them as far as we can over here to try to make. It to try to answer that.
Yeah.
As far as, as far as the other comments regarding screening and additional trees, we have no problem with that whatsoever. Uh Vassar would like you to know that they are at eighty percent occupancy of that building. Uh there's only eight units that are not occupied, and they have five people moving in later this summer, or excuse me, five more apartments will be leased out during the summer. But I think as all of you have seen, we're, I think we're right on the dot with parking. On a daily basis, there's at least one third of the parking spaces available.
Yeah, that was my next question, do you think we, how's it looking, do you think we're going to need to.
Yeah. I, I can't foresee the need for um the the deferred parking to ever be built, but you know, this is, this is our failsafe.
Yeah, we need it on the plans, just in case.
Yes, sir. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thanks, David, for the presentation. Eric?
Sure. Uh this project is up uh for, let's see, the uh this, the project, the original project for the faculty housing was closed out. It was, it was built, it was constructed as a full CO, so technically there's a secret review for this and an amended, and it's an amended site plan. Um that said, there's a couple of mine, we're recommending the board can continue in its role as lead agency for that application. Um and find, we've provided a consistency of resolution with the prior secret determination, because it doesn't really bring up anything. Any environmental issues that weren't considered previously. Um. And I think David's pretty much answered it, we had a couple of minor comments about uh for screening that they seem impenable to, and. I appreciate the dilemma with the parking spaces, that sounds like, sounds like a good solution, so if you could just get uh, we're recommending a conditional approval.
All right, thanks, Eric, anything on this, Andy?
Uh, yeah, we didn't really have a whole lot to say, um, the new entrance does um. Go right through with the pro- the stormwater management practice that was proposed for this, the parking spaces, so it's kind of split between two, two sides of the of the entrance. Um so we just just asked that they give us some updated calculations uh with a SWIP attendant to kind of clarify that everything is sized appropriately.
Okay, great. Go around the board for comments on it, Peter?
I'm good.
Ben?
Nothing.
Oh?
No.
I'm good.
Nothing.
Yep, I'm good as well, glad you, glad you decided getting occupied. Probably had to deal with it there.
I move that the planning board waived the site plan in public hearing in accordance with two ten dash one five one D.
Second. Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero.
I move that the planning board find that the Vassar College faculty housing revisions to land bank parking amended site plan application involves incremental changes to the previously approved project. Of natural magnitude and scope that are non-signi- non-significant and consistent with the previous secret negative declaration adopted by the planning board on June twenty second, twenty twenty two. As modified by the proposed application received from May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
Second. Moved in seconded for secret, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for Vassar College faculty housing revision to land bank parking subject to the following. Response to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, instead response to re-review by the planning department has to add proceeding, including this inclusive of and not limited to the following, one through seven.
Second. Moved in seconded, called to question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
All right, David, good to go?
Thank you very much, everyone, have a good night.
You too.
Next stop is uh forty two Shamrock Circle.
Sure, so this uh is a.
Explain this.
Yep, I'll quickly explain this, this is um. This is a short term rental uh under the new town's new law, which was adopted last year, uh short term rentals that are. Essentially commercial in nature, that is, it's they're not uh uh resided in by uh the 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 primary owner. Um or the owner or the or the primary resident. Um are are considered commercial in nature, and those require a special use permit from the town board. So this is the first application the town board has received. Uh the town board, you know, uh accepted the application, they set a public hearing, I believe it's next month, July tenth, did I write that down in here? I did, July tenth.
Right, so it's all.
Yeah, so it's all the town boards to deal with, um not yours. Um one oversight when we wrote the law was that if you, when you read the code, um any special use permit requires site plan review unless there's some, unless it specifically says otherwise. Um and we did not specify that site plan review would not be required for these, um this is a single family home, we don't typically review site plans for single family homes. Nothing is changing on the site, to use it this way is really a question of use, and that's why the special use permit makes sense, and that's why the, you know, and the town board will have to make that determination. Um but there is no, there is no site plan. Why is it here? Why can't the town board just waive the site plan? Well, as it turns out in the code, there is no provision for the town board to waive the site plan, only the planning board has that ability. So for the purposes of this initial application, until we can make changes to the, to the law, um you know, uh and and perhaps there'll be. You know, hopefully that won't take very long, but um that that may not be the only one that you receive, you're being asked to waive the site plan. Um and that's really all there is to it, again, there's nothing to be waived, um but uh there is no site plan, but we need to.
Here's the problem.
Yeah.
Okay, I've said this many times before, the planning board should not be in the business of providing waivers. This is very simple, there's a very simple remedy to this, and that is for the town board to amend the regulation that states it very clearly. Because I don't want to set a precedent here of providing a waiver for for anything. If the waivers are part of it because the regulation.
Needs to be changed.
Needs to be changed.
So I, what, I would just say to the town board, amend it, but don't put us on the hook. Uh for providing a waiver, because people, this is only the tip of the iceberg here. And who knows, you know, what the waves are going to be like in the future, I don't want to put us in a position of having to defend. Making a waiver for something that could have been, that can be easily remedied otherwise, all it takes is a simple action by the town board. Amend the regulation and don't put us on the hook for going on on record as a board that makes. and don't put us on the hook for going on record as a board that makes, provides waivers for anything.
Are you aware that they're working on amending that?
Well, yeah, only because it's us that, you know, Lisa and myself and those of us that are working on making revisions, right, so.
It says right here, it says, "To address this issue, an amendment to the regulations will be prepared for consideration to the town board."
It's in process.
Period. So why should we be on the hook?
The only, and I don't, I don't disagree necessarily, but my only counter would be that there is an applicant who, you know, has followed the rules, has submitted an application, is before the town board.
I understand.
And this, there is, again, it's a residential structure. There really is nothing that we're.
I agree with everything you said. We are not part of that process.
Absolutely.
And it should be addressed by the entities that are a part of the process, not us. We are not part of that process. And I don't want us to start giving waivers, particularly when it's not necessary. It's easily remedied by the town board and they can do it expediently, I'm sure, and they will.
Yeah, so it sounds like we get this one, but we've got to have them change everything.
So this one's going to be the exception?
Yeah, I mean, from what I understand, it was already operating as a, as a short term rental, right?
Well, we do, I mean, we have, you know, forty or some odd short term rentals in the town, you know, before we had any regulations. All right, so these were, people were doing this. Then there was a question about whether they were legal or not and we didn't have any regulations to specify that they're not. It was unclear and the town board had asked us, this goes back over a year ago, to create regulations for short term rentals and that's what we, what we did last year. And so now people who operate them are being asked to come in and get their, get a permit.
Right.
To legalize the use.
Get inspections and stuff.
They have a period of time to do that, but this was definitely, you know, even though many eyes were on it, we missed this.
Yep.
This aspect.
And thank God, it's easily remedied.
It is.
We should not be that remedy.
Right.
That's all I'm saying. And I really don't think we're an appropriate remedy.
Understood, that's what I.
Well, Lisa, I don't know, do you want to?
Do you have any comments on that?
Have any comment on any of that?
My only comment is that we will be preparing the draft for the town board, but it is not a, you know, they have to hold, schedule a public hearing, then hold the public hearing and the final version of the law has to sit on their desk for at least ten days before being adopted. So it's not like we can, it's not a resolution that they can pass at their next meeting and it'll be done. So it will take a little bit of time and so that's the reason we put it before the planning board just for, you know, because this particular applicant is in the process of trying to get legalized and they've done everything short of this requirement, which frankly, we never intended for single family homes to be subject to site plan requirements, so.
But let, it's in the town board's court. Let them provide the remedy. But we shouldn't put ourselves in a position where we jeopardize our position and the town board can easily remedy this. That's good policy.
Yep, it sounds like they're working on it at least. In the meantime, we have to do this. Any other comments from board members?
I move that pursuant to two ten dash one five two dot one C, the planning board waived the requirement for the site plan approval for the application before the town board for a special use permit to permit a short term rental at forty-two Shamrock Circle.
Second. Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
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 Oh.
We don't make regulations.
How many, so I just, we need to count.
So how many no's?
There was one yes, I heard.
I think there was only one yes. There were six no's.
Yeah.
Well, Carl, is that, is that right? Did you vote?
Yes, I said yes.
Okay, so two yeses, two no's.
Okay, no's. We have one more item.
Time extension. The regional hospital.
I move that the planning board grant a one year time extension moving to the approval expiration date from July twentieth, twenty twenty-four to July twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven zero. All right, any other business that people would use to bring before the board tonight?
Nope. I.
School's open.
I move that we terminate tonight's meeting.
Second. Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Signing off. Thanks, everyone.
Everybody.